Conservative program in Hubbardston Center School and at the middle high school. So, um, so no, this is not a hu- we do not anticipate this is going to be a huge revenue source for the district. It could be, maybe, but, but if it is, I would-
Well, cause the heats and lights are on anyway, like that's, it doesn't go off, it's, so that doesn't, like, you walk in, it's not like, oh, everyone's gone, heat's off, lights are all off, they-
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, it's a minimal, it's a minimal.
Yeah, it's so like that's, yeah, like that's not. So how much rent are you looking, how much do you get for caps and how much do you get for, for, how much do you look at possibly getting for like say Hubbardston? Like what's, what's the goal here, what's the-
That, that's one of the criteria for the RFP in the bid.
Yeah.
Is to bid that, so we don't know what it'll be, it's part of the bid.
Yeah, but you don't have like a minimum idea of what you're looking for?
We had a minimum of, what was it, twelve?
I think it was twelve.
So while she's looking for that, back to the first part of the question, with the existing employees of the program. What, what, um, does the program just go away, or ours goes away and, and, um?
Generally, I mean, they're, the new company will be looking to hire people.
Yeah.
So, I couldn't guarantee that they would hire our current staff. I would imagine that they would strongly consider folks who we have employed in those positions. But I couldn't guarantee that, you know, the current existing staff would be hired by the new company.
Yeah, just so one way or the other, if something else comes in, there's no guarantees, these people may all get let go.
Hmm.
Okay.
But, so that-
I was just gonna ask, what about the, I believe you said there was a director of this after-school program? Is that the sole, um, responsibility of that individual right now, does she or he have other responsibilities?
In the district, yes. No, she does not.
So that position would go away and we'd essentially see a cost savings to the towns and the region?
No. This is a, it's a revolving.
No. Okay.
It's a self-sustaining program, so-
Okay, so it's like an enterprise fund.
So her salary is paid out of the revenue that comes in, all the salaries are paid out of the revenue that comes in from the families.
Okay.
Okay, so it balances itself out, net zero. And my only other question is, um, with it being outside vendor, does that open up eligibility to out-of-town students to participate in it? Or is it strictly just either Hubbardston itself or within the region if there's not availability?
Strictly our students.
Okay.
How about school choice students?
Well, there are students, so-
There are students.
Yeah, okay.
There are students.
They're enrolled, so they are considered Quavon students.
Dr. Mura, the vendor quote, are they responsible then for staff? You said you got a problem having staff and being able to keep them, and basically, it sounds like it was basically volunteers?
Yes. No, no.
Or people who would be retired, I would think if they have time in the morning and then time in the afternoon.
You interested in that?
It, it could be, it could be.
No, no.
It could be retired people, but we have not been able to, we have not been able to attract any retired people.
But the vendors wouldn't handle all that, that's my question.
The vendors, they would be their, they would be their employees, yes, they would hire.
And then it's a paying job for the people that they could get.
Yes. Yes, and, and we aren't using volunteers, I mean, we certainly would.
High school kids, no college.
But it's, it, it's high school students, it's college students, it, it has been some, um, some adults as well from time to time. Um, but it, um, it's just, it's been an incredible challenge.
Do you think, I'm asking you to predict something that doesn't exist. But do you think that if this sixth grade hadn't left, we would be having this conversation?
Yes.
You do, so the program just needs help?
Yes, they do. Definitely.
Okay.
And we want to be able to expand it as well.
Yeah. It's, it's, I would say, the staffing issue is district-wide. I would say the enrollment in Hubbardston has been strong, I think is where the program started. Um, and so I think the enrollment here is not, um, not as much of a challenge. But the, the other issue is that, um, you know, some, all of our communities have families who cannot currently access the program because they can't, cannot afford it. And these, um, vendors, um, one of the criteria is that they accept vouchers so that low-income families can access the program if they choose to. And that would be very, very good for those children and, and a help to the, to those families that we can't currently provide.
What about, uh, speaking of the vouchers and everything else, what about the state regs in terms of, quote, the staff that is hired? They're gonna be dealing with children of various ages. Uh, are the, the regs really, uh, strict in sense of, so now you've got to get people who are qualified-
Yes.
-to work with kids as opposed to-
Corey-checked on all of them, huh?
Yeah.
And-
There already are, there already are Corey and sort of checked, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the, the license, the, the company holds the license with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Mm-hmm.
They're licensed through that agency.
So if they were, they would need to get a, a license to operate that program.
Mm-hmm.
They are licensed, they would be licensed in Massachusetts, but they would need to get a new license to operate in the Quavon Regional School District. And this, we wouldn't pers- we wouldn't expect that this program would be starting until September. We continue with our current, this program also operates on school vacation weeks and throughout the summer. So we would continue with our current program, our own program through the end of the summer. And then would anticipate starting with a new company in the fall.
Now, is this also in relate, uh, related to what was presented to all of us at the meeting, uh, what's planned for the new Braintree School? Is that a separate thing that you're talking about totally?
Yeah, this was, you know, separate, totally separate.
Okay, so this is, okay, thank you.
You really want to go through the hat right now?
No, I didn't know if that was just part of the after-school program.
Let's not open that right now.
That's Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
Okay, um, anyone else have any questions?
Just one more, so you mentioned, um, that you're looking to expand the program. When you say that, what do you mean?
We, um, to, to, to other schools, so currently we're only running the program Hubbardston and Rockers Lane. We would like to have a program in Oakham Center School, Hardwood Elementary School, and the middle school.
Okay, so you don't necessarily mean increasing the number of students participating here? You just simply mean having the company run it in all the satellite locations?
Yes. Yes, but also, we would like to see enrollment, we could increase enrollment potentially, um, in, in our current programs as well.
And do we have room in the Hubbardston Center School to increase enrollment to a point that it doesn't, um, expand to counter, you know, Katie's point was that, you know, there's other things going on. At what point do we have so many kids in this after-school program that there's no room for the other activities? Is there a balance for that?
There would be, but I, I don't anticipate that happening.
They probably all have to go, and then we wouldn't be there, cause the kids would be, you know what I mean, like, yeah.
Okay.
And that's another one of the criteria written into the RFP, is that the district administration has the right to speak with the, whatever company it is to make those decisions, stop enrollment, open enro- open enrollment somewhere else, or close a program because there's not sufficient enrollment. So we have the overall say in those types of things.
So what's the number of years that you guys are proposing for that agreement?
It, we're looking at a three-year contract, but after year one, if it's not working for one party or the other, we have a certain number of days with notice and we move on. If, we don't wanna lock ourselves in for three years if it's not working for our parents.
And in the event that you get no RFPs or no RFPs that meet your criteria, what's your plan?
Continue with our current program and as best we can.
Okay.
It's highly unlikely you'll find a new, a new vendor to, you know, come, to come to the show after one round. I mean, it's posted everywhere.
How long has it been posted?
Um, it went up, I don't actually remember, it took it up, um, March eighteenth it went out.
Do you have any responses back yet?
Um, pro- no, just last week, we had, uh, school visits with anyone who was interested, and the proposals are due on May third.
How many school visits did you have?
We had a visit in every one of the locations.
How many vendors came up to visit?
Two.
Okay, that's usually a good indication of the max.
That's a new record for, I just had one more question, by the way. Um, anyone else have any additional questions?
Does, is, did you find that dollar amount?
Um, the proposals aren't due until May third.
But the-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, tw- uh, twelve hundred fifty dollars a month.
Okay, for each school or just Hubbardston specific?
Hubbardston specific, but it's, it's equal at each school except the middle school is less.
Okay. Okay, and what was it again, I'm sorry, you said it's-
One thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month.
Okay.
So, so what do you guys, uh, you know, uh, what are you looking for specifically from us? I know you're, you're broaching it and it's, your email says exploring opportunities, all that sort of stuff, and, you know, thank you for coming here. What, what do you, what do you need from us, I guess?
Permission to sublet a portion of the Hubbardston Center School for the purpose of a before and after-school program for Hubbardston Center School students.
So that would take a, a, a motion and a, um, a second and discussion and a vote, uh, for that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, any additional questions?
So, so we're specifically not talking about the lease at this particular point in time then, right? It's just to, permission to allow them to explore and subletting-
I don't, I don't know, I mean-
-the center school, or are we talking about a lease at this point?
Given information.
Therefore talking in three years.
So, so this is, this is what I envision as the way it's written right now. We're coming to you because our current lease with you says we need to come to you to, for approval.
So it's a extension of the lease.
Um, we expect, we expect if we get a vote, as I did in Barry last week, if we get a vote, that you allow us to, to lease, to sublet partial of the building, then when we come to a lease agreement, we have, already have the okay to negotiate a lease agreement with it, we need better.
I'll make the motion that, uh-
Well, hold on, I, I, this is like the first I'm hearing of this, and it's, I, I mean, there's a million questions flying around here in this room, and I'd like to talk to our own current administrator. I'd like her input, on what she feels about the whole situation before we go ahead and make any decisions about anything. We have a program now in town that's working, right?
Uh, no, excuse me, it's not your program, it's a district program.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear from our administrator and hear what she has to say about the whole thing. See what her opinion is about it. Don't you think she'd have valid input on this subject? I guess I think she would. Maybe I'm the only one.
Okay, well, um, you were saying?
I was about to make the motion that we allow the, uh, school department to sublet the Hubbardston Center School. What, what else did you need in that?
For the purpose of a before and after-school program.
For the purpose of the before and after-school programs.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we're in discussion again, is there anything, um, anyone wants to discuss or any additional questions? Seeing none, we will vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Posed.
Posed, one, um, so the motion passes, carries, four to one.
Just to go on, if it's possible, could we just have confirmation of the vote in writing, um, either, you know, by certif- by the certified minutes when she approved him, or just that we haven't referred it?
Yeah, I mean, it was, we, do you wanna wait for those, or do you want just an email from us stating that, it's up to you?
I think an email, an email is fine.
Okay, David, don't do that?
I have another form letter that I'll just pu- pu- put together and send it over.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Alright, don't go anywhere, uh, well, uh, next item is, um, so the school committee, um, we, we, we've called it New Business B, school committee discussion of the fiscal-
We never, we never talked about the loading dock.
The loading dock.
We haven't even got off that one. Back up.
Sorry, I was all excited, sorry Cheryl.
Nice try.
Um, so, sorry.
So, uh, last week it came to the attention of, I don't know if you've met, uh, Mr. Kevin Clark, who's our new plant facilities manager,
yeah.
but it came to his, um, attention that our chief procurement, uh, chief, um, project engineer and your DPW, whoever the head is, whatever you call him.
Travis.
Um, I don't know his name, but title, uh, had a discussion about making some repairs down where the loading dock and the dumpsters are currently located. And I put the hold on that because I thought that any discussion should happen between the school committee representatives and, uh, the select board. So, we would like to see some repairs done over there, it's getting pretty bad when the trucks come in to, to load on the loading dock and wondering if we could come to an agreement on how we could move forward with repairing that part of the driveway.
How much work is it?
Excuse me?
Sorry, I just put a butterscotch in my mouth, it's so good. How much work is it?
Oh, I have no idea, but, um, I think what, uh, the two gentlemen were talking about, where it's basically just laying something down on top of what was there, and Mr. Clark is of the opinion that it really needs to be dug down so it doesn't happen again, and kinda like done the right way. And I have no idea what the right way would mean, in the sense of putting it-
Well, you can't really-
Do you have any idea about cost, you know?
I'm an accountant, I'm not, your DPW guy would have more idea what the cost of that would be.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sure he has a lot of experience with roads and everything.
Well, yeah, but you're not gonna dig down in one section, it's either, if you're gonna do that, you do that through the whole parking lot, so.
No, you don't have to, if it's a, it's an area that's got constant, you know, heavy pressure, heavy loads coming in through there, you can, you can cut off a pretty good area, do a full-depth reclamation there and get it pretty good. You can, I mean, you know, not ideal, but we don't have money to do the whole thing.
Well, that's what I mean, that's not ideal, but, like, what I'm saying is, is, would, is that even worth it rather than compared to just, like, grind it into a patch? So we can possibly do, we can do, yeah, I don't know.
So-
So we do some, anything, God.
So, David, Travis, um, have you had any discussions with him about this?
I have not, so it seems like we need to do basic bucket work.
Yep.
Of figuring out, A, what's the scope of work?
Yep.
B, what's it gonna cost, and see where do we find the money, cause this probably is not a chapter ninety eligible project. So we can, we can do that work and have it ready for you in, at your next meeting.
Okay, sounds good, is that good enough?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item is the, uh, the, are you guys open, by the way?
We're gonna open as soon as you-
Sounds good, next item, next item.
We're gonna do it.
They've been waiting.
Yeah.
Say for real, is the, um-
She's telling me butterscotch.
That's right.
So, but, I know, it's probably smells the-
No, it's probably good.
Butterscotch, um, it won't help it.
Did you bring enough for everybody?
I just brought one more and I can't choose between you all. Um, is the school committee discussion of the fiscal year, um, twenty-three budget, we have the finance committee here.
Okay, seven fourteen, I'll call the meeting to order.
Okay, so, uh, we also have a couple members of the Hubbardston, uh, I mean, Quavon School Committee from Hubbardston. Mark Wig- Wiggler and, and Debbie Chamberlain, thanks for coming. And then the aforementioned, um, uh, superintendent and, um, what's your title again, Cheryl?
Director of Administrative Services.
I should know that, yeah.
Otherwise don't excuse us, ma'am.
Goodness, ma'am, okay, thank you. Alright, so David, we've got this on the agenda, uh, an important time of year, without a doubt. Um, can we just, uh, sort of start off where we're at with things, with you?
Well, uh, we, we presented a balanced budget on March seventh, that was in advance of getting the, uh, the numbers from Quavon and from Massachusetts. And, uh, the notice about the building inspector's situation. Um, the, uh, request from the, the assessment from, uh, Quavon Regional was five hundred, five million, seven oh four, five eighty-two, which was an increase of about six and a half thousand dollars, hundred thousand dollars. So six hundred fifty thousand dollars, or twelve point nine percent, um, which was way more than our estimate. So, uh, we have a budget which is currently not in balance.
Okay, alright, well, that's where we're at, so, uh, I guess I'll just sort of start off with, um, there have been some, some recent, um, uh, yeah, meetings to discuss the budget with the school committee, um, several of them, right? Um, and, uh, you've gone through in detail the long presentation on how you've, um, uh, you know, gotten to the point where you've, you've gotten to. Uh, I don't know if all of us have, have watched it or listened to it?
We've got a handout.
You've got it he- handout here?
We do, we do, we have a handout.
Okay, um-
We have a, a one for each finance committee member and one for each thing, what is there? We can include according to-
Alright.
Would you like us to go through?
I, I guess, right, I mean-
No, it's a lot.
So, there, there's a lot of information here, it wasn't my intention that you'd go through it all, but-
It's not ours either.
Just to have the information available as you can go back to, but we can, we can tell you to go to a specific page, I think, and not be in the same pages though.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, and, and you know, so many people have, have, uh, a lot of questions. A lot of people who see this for the first time have a lot of the same questions. Um, so, i- if, if there are some, some questions that you've received from, um, that you might sort of anticipate, um, you know, the big one, why, you know, um, it, I guess that's, that's what we need, is to sort of understand why we're at where we're at, because the, the ham, hamstrung situation that we're in, um, you know, as ever, has, has, feels like we're in one of those, how do we get out of it situations? So that's where we're at, um, emotionally about it, um, and so, you know, if you could just do your best to, to just let us know, um, let us know why.
Um, well, first I wanna, I wanna say that our budget is up by four point seven percent. So, that's not, that's higher than it has been in several years, and there's a slide in there that shows you our history. It's on slide number thirty-three, shows the history of our, our budgets, and that hasn't been that way for a long time, that it's gone up by four point seven percent. Um, a couple of the, I, reasons that it's gone up is we've stopped during the years of COVID, we didn't do any of our capital improvement projects in our schools, which we usually ju- only do floor replacements in our schools, so we added those back in there. Um, what, the, really, the why is because we're in a district of declining enrollment, and with declining enrollment comes virtually no state aid. So we're getting a minimum of thirty dollars per student and additional state aid. Um, we did get a, a little plus in this year in that, I don't, I think you've heard about the Student Opportunity Act and how that was going to make changes to foundation budgets in the, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I just wanna point you to that particular slide, so that you can understand what's happening in education. Could you look at slide, oh my God, I think it's twenty-two? Slide twenty-two is titled How Foundation Budget Is Calculated?
Yep.
So just as a background for new members on either board, um, you can see on this slide what I'm trying to show and indicate is that funding starts with a foundation and budget for each school district in the state. The D E S E, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has eleven different categories of expenses. You see those going across the top of that slide. In addition, there are nine different categories of student types, those are going down the column on the far left. And those numbers in between are the multipliers for each one of those students in each of those eleven categories. That's how your base foundation budget is started. If you can go to the next page, you can actually see Quavon's foundation budget. I know it's very small, this is online, you can actually look up online, but just to get you, give you an idea, you see the dark black line in the middle of the chart?
Vertical?
Vertical line, yep. This, the, to the left of that are what the numbers are for Quavon, based on each of those categories, each of the nine categories of students we have, and all the math comes up with the base. But on top of that is what's going on in the right-hand part of that chart. There are different multipliers because of the Student Opportunity Act, which identified certain areas in the budget that have been seriously underfunded for a number of years. You can see what's in the blue box on the bottom. Our foundation budget that was calculated by the state actually increased by three million dollars for FY twenty-three, with the implementation of new costs in those categories of students.
Were these, uh, was that, um, uh, that SOA that I threw the acronym right, was that dur- during COVID too, or is this all out?
This is year two.
This is year two.
They're, they are implementing, so they looked at, the Foundation Review Commission looked at a certain point in time where were the, the actual costs in employee benefits, special education, English learners, and low-income students. What are those real costs as compared to what the, the state was funding for education? And they said, holy cow, these areas specifically are way underfunded. And they came up with a plan to raise the budgets for those items over seven years. By law, they were supposed to start three years ago, that was twenty twenty, they didn't start, it was the first year of COVID, everything came to a close. Last year was the first year, this is the second year. By the end of seven years, they're supposed to get up to where those costs are really, what they're really costing us to have a style, a child in special education, have an English learner, pay for health insurance for our employees, in seven years. The number that was, they looked at nine years ago. So, they're, they're always been behind the thing, but at least they're trying to, they're trying to create a budget for districts that are, is more in line with the actual costs are, and then fund that with chapter seventy-eight.
But?
But. If you go to the next slide, it's a colorful slide that says one of the main factors in the FY twenty-three foundation budget increases. So here are the categories, and this is very quick, because otherwise we'll be here for two hours, like Mr. Wiggler says, keep it short, Cheryl. Look at the final column on the right, in the categories of benefits and fixed charges, on top of the four point five percent inflation rate that was applied to all of those categories, benefits and health insurance actually was an eleven percent increase. Guidance and psychological services was a nine percent increase, special education added district tuition, eight point four. And then that yellow block is additional incremental costs for English language learners, based on what grade level you were in. And then for all of our students that are low-income, there are twelve different categories of incremental costs based on what category each school district is in. Quavon is identified as being in group seven. So for group seven, the cost for all of those students went up another nine percent. So that's why our foundation budget went up by three million dollars. I give the numbers on the next slide, just so you can see how, how each one of those incrementally went up. What's very interesting in our budget this year is the next slide that says Quavon's low-income enrollment. From last school year to this school year, we saw an increase of two hundred and sixteen low-income students. That's a thirty-two percent in, in our district. So, Sheila and I looked at that and said, let's look what's going around, around us. So I took the closest districts to us, and we are the second highest number, but the largest increase in low-income students.
So these aren't necessarily new students, they're just new, um-
New to the low-income category, yes. So with those come additional expenses that usually come with students from low-income families.
Sorry to interrupt again, but what would that rate be for those students? I know you don't, probably know exact numbers, but generally, um, if the two hundred and something students didn't, uh, move into this, uh, category, what is the, you know?
The rate's right next to it, Dan, five thousand dollars?
No, no, I'm saying if they didn't move into that category, so if, if, if fifty, if fiscal year twenty-two said six seventy-four, and fiscal year twenty-three said six seventy-four, there would be no difference.
No.
But those students would still cost something.
Right, exactly.
That's what I'm saying, the delta between the five thousand fifty-six and two thousand, three thousand, four thousand.
Well, it would be what was in the base category, so I, I, I'd have to sit down with an adding machine and add all the pieces together.
I'm just, I was just wondering how much of that million is, if, if it's-
That, that million is an additional million dollars to our foundation budget because of those two hundred and sixteen kids that were identified as low-income.
I get it, but there, those two sixteen were also gonna cost something, so I'm just wondering whether the delta between the million one that's there, was it gonna be nine eighty or four twenty, or, you know, and, and I'm not even asking for the answer, I'm just-
It, it's a million dollars more.
Yeah.
Not a million dollars, it's a million dollars more.
I, I get it.
So the delta doesn't matter what it is.
Oh, wait, I don't.
You don't get, I-
It doesn't matter what it was, it's a million dollars more.
Okay, I don't get it, I can get it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm confused. So, I don't understand why there's a different dollar amount for a student, whether they're below income or above income other than maybe getting food assistance, like, what, I don't understand why there's a different dollar amount. What, what makes a low-income student cost more than a non-low-income student?
Why don't we, can I just answer, almost, half-answer? If you, if you read that first paragraph, low-income isn't really, so, low-income students are identified as participating in state public assistance programs, including the supplemental nutritional-
But what does that do with the school?
Mass health foster care.
None of that has anything to do with the school.
So this is part, this is the formula that is set by the state, so I, I don't want, I have no idea how they came up with these numbers.
So the state's mandating it.
This, this is the state formula for every school district, for every student in each of these categories, of which there's twelve, and we're in category seven.
So it's non-negotiable.
It's non, right, and, and, and I don't think we'd ever know what, what, how they come to that conclusion, but it's-
Well, that's crap, because I just, I'm sorry, that, I'm, I'm not blaming you if that's what the state's telling you, because, like, this stuff doesn't cost this, like, because a student is homeless or has low income, other than the, I, this, this, the school isn't contributing to the household, like, that doesn't have anything to do with it.
Right, so I'm sure they're-
They don't provide mass health, the school doesn't do that. They don't provide foster care, they don't provide any of this crap, you know, so that's why, that doesn't make the dollar amount go up for the school.
No, understood.
This is actually, this is, this is benefiting the school, because, because of those two hundred and sixteen students, where they're actually increasing our foundation budget amount by, uh, over a million dollars. So this is not telling us we have to spend an additional million dollars, this is saying they're increasing- This is saying they're increasing our foundation budget.
From the state?
Correct.
Okay, but that still doesn't help us with our towns, 'cause the money's still going up for what we need.
Yeah, we're, I don't think we're quite at the end of the-
Yeah, I, I think you have to let this run the, the full course to get an understanding of what's going on and how this is helping us, okay? So, and that's in the next two slides, I promise. If you look two slides forward, it's kinda blue on one half, white on the other, it says, "Look at Funding calculation." The reason the foundation budget is so important is that, that is the first number that the calculation starts with, to determine how much aid the state will give each district. So they have to calculate what the minimum is to spend on, on education, which is the foundation budget. That's, so that's why it's very important we know where it comes from. The next part of the calculation is to calculate the required local contribution. That's the amount, the minimum that each town has to submit to Quabin towards its budget. That's calculated by the Department of Revenue and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, based on reports that come from your town. And it's based on property wealth in your town and income levels in your town. So that's different for all five of our towns. So that number is next, and what Chapter Seventy-eight is the difference. So the state says your foundation budget is ten dollars and your required local contribution from all of your towns is five dollars, then the difference is five dollars and that's supposed to come from the state. Except that, on the next slide, the state only wants to pay forty-one percent of the bill. See the middle box, the thing red? The state only wants to pay forty-one percent of the bill for education and it wants local contributions from, from the towns and the state to fifty-nine percent. So right off the bat, the, the state is only willing to pay forty-one percent of what a budget is to each town. That's set in the, in the statute.
And that hasn't changed, that's been that way.
That hasn't changed and there's a lot of talk afoot about getting that to change because it's, it's amazing what even one percentage point would do if one more percentage point would go to aid rather than coming from member town. However, it's not gonna help Quabin. And I think, yet, yes. So that very simple formula, ten dollars comes from, ten dollars is our budget, four dollars would come from the state, six dollars would have to come from the member towns. That worked all fine and well until they started saying that, if you have declining enrollment, we're not gonna take back that, any of that four dollars, but what we, you owe us is called hold harmless debt. And we started to fall, fall into hold harmless debt in FY oh-eight. Well, what that means is, they, if they're required to give you forty-one percent, let's say four dollars of the ten dollars, but you lose enrollment, you should be getting less than that. And they've held everybody constant. So whatever aid you got last year, you at least get that. They backed out of that one year as well. But they won't make your aid go down, go down. It'll at least be zero or up to twenty, twenty-five, or thirty dollars per student. But we've been in declining debt, declining enrollment for a long time in our district. Two or three more slides forward is the, is the graph. We've been losing resident students in our district since fiscal oh-five, I believe, two thousand four, two thousand sixteen. So for each of these years that we've lost resident students in our district, the state has not been decreasing our aid level. They've been giving us at least the same, or twenty to thirty dollars more per student. But that twenty to thirty dollars more per student is just adding to the debt we have to the state. I've been doing this job for twenty-seven years now. I didn't hear the words "hold harmless debt" until FY oh-eight. So I started in nineteen ninety-five. Then they came up with this concept of districts owing the state money because they haven't reduced their aid in FY oh-eight. And that's just the graph I referred to earlier that has all our history of what our budgets have done and what your assessments have done. Let's skip ahead to this, this, two pages ahead. There's a slide that says, "Quick Math." Now you'll see what that foundation budget increase Dr. Muir was saying, how it's helping us. Our foundation budget for the current school year is twenty-two million five seventy-two nine twenty-three. It's been calculated at this portion of the state budget process, 'cause it may change, as being twenty-five million six oh-one one ninety-three, or just over three million dollar increase. We're getting minimum aid, which is the thirty dollars per student, so we're getting a whole fifty-eight thousand dollars more from the state for next school year. Across all of our five member towns, the required local contribution from each member town is going up, total of six hundred and nine thousand dollars, so we're getting six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars more. If you take three million dollars, subtract the six sixty-eight, the hold harmless effect is two-point-three-six million dollars. That means that we still are in debt to the state, two-point-six million dollars. Our hold harmless debt for the current year is five-point-one million. Our FY twenty-three hold harmless debt is two-point-seven-five, the difference being that two-point-three-six million. Because our foundation budget went up by three million dollars, it decreased our debt from five million to two million. That's in year two of the Student Opportunity Act. If the legislature abides by its own law and continues to fund the Student Opportunity Act in years three through seven, hopefully we're out of hold harmless debt next year. And what that means is in FY twenty-four, we should start seeing two million dollars of Chapter Seventy-eight instead of a reduction in debt.
Do you think that's gonna happen?
So they make laws and break laws just as fast as they make them.
I know.
Okay, I mean, they were supposed to start three years ago, COVID hit, they didn't. So now we're another year, whole year back. So what, like I said, they had seven years that they were going to get us to the level that they said we should've been seven years ago, now we're eight years out. So we're gonna still be eight years behind true costs unless something seriously happens to the economy.
So are you making a bet? We, forget about this, I know we can't, but for the moment, forget about these calculations and all that sort of stuff. So into the actual operating budget and all that sort of stuff, are, are you making a bet that we are gonna come good on this stuff to help pay for the increases or the level funding this, or whatever, that causes, you know, the rest of the budget to churn?
Um, I, I'm betting on a couple of other things will happen in the meantime. Number one, the House budget is due out on Wednesday. Both members of the House and members of the Senate, specifically our representatives and senators, have said that they are definitely increasing regional school transportation from eighty percent, which is in the governor's budget, to ninety percent in the House budget. If I see that on Wednesday, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars additional revenue that comes right off of town assessments, so we're hoping that that happens. In addition, again, I quoted twenty-seven years, more years than not, that governor's budget revenue projection that comes out with the governor's budget is the lowest that we usually see throughout the state's process. What that tells me, we're looking at increased Chapter Seventy levels from the House and the Senate. In addition, circuit breakers on the line. What circuit breaker is, is reimbursement for true special education costs. If circuit breaker goes up, that's another reason we can reduce our budget by charging off the circuit breaker. That lowers the budget and lowers the assessment to the towns. So a lot of things still have to happen, Dan.
Yeah.
We're starting very early in the process. Again, twenty-seven years ago, February twenty-eighth, take that cherry sheet to the bank, that's what you were gonna get for the year. Right now, we, we're lucky if we get that out from the governor's office. We go into June, some of you may remember, November, we were in Hubbardston because the final numbers came out from conference committee in November. So we're still very early in even knowing if that's really what our revenue stream's gonna look like to fund FY twenty-three.
Ma'am?
Mrs. Rain, you had a question? I have a question, yeah. How is the hold harmless debt serviced?
What do you mean serviced?
We have a debt, do we make payments on it?
No, no, it just, it gets carried forward, like, like, this current year it's five-point-one million. After that foundation budget of three million dollars, it drops to two-point-seven.
All right, so what it, what it effectively does then is penalize us for the, um, Chapter Seventy money.
Our, our declining enrollment penalizes us until that debt is, is paid back.
But they're in alignment with each other, right?
Yes.
Right, it's caused by that, okay.
Okay, I, I have a couple things to add. Anyone have any questions about what we've just, you know, been averding? No, okay, so, a little bit back before COVID, so what, what we, we've mentioned this before, and what, what as towns, and I'm gonna speak even though I can for all five towns sort of at once, what we'd always hoped for eventually was to be able to get together with the district early to, to, you know, when we're going through our permutations of whether we're level funding things or having a COLA increase or, or whatever, all the, the stuff that we discuss about from a financial standpoint in our towns, you know, whether we could get together early with the district to, to talk about what we think we can afford on a given year. So what, what, you know, we tried to do a select board, what, what I did prior, literally just prior to COVID is I visited three of the other four select boards, got time on their, their agendas, and went and spoke to them and said, hey, what do you think about this? What do you think we, we get together, you know, in whatever, September, some, some month, I'm, I'm just gonna throw one out there, as a, you know, five-town, and, and go to the schools and say, hey, this is our preliminary budget, this is what we think we're gonna, and, 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 and start somewhere together. Unfortunately, that has been delayed a couple of years and, and I hadn't gone to New Braintree yet. But anyway, that was something we were thinking about doing and something that had come up in the past to, to start the conversation a little bit more together than it has been because it's so hard for us, and I know you guys know this, but it's so hard for us to, to just get a number, which I'm sure you don't wanna, you're not thrilled about setting along, but it is what it is. And then we have to just try to figure out what to do next. So, you know, any, any, any way we can join into the process sooner is something we wanna do. And, and I'm just saying that out loud because it's something that came up a lot before the, the, the wheels sort of fell off the world for a couple of years. So anyway, I, I don't, I don't know exact, I don't know if you guys even want to do that, you want our input, or, you know, I, I, I've heard so many times, you know, in a good way, that your responsibilities are to the students. You know, I understand that, like, you know, you've got a, a model, you've got a business, you've got a responsibility, all that sort of stuff, but we do too. So that, that, that was part of the discussion that I had. What, 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 what comes of that moving forward, I don't know. But I just wanted to sort of say that out loud because it was something we were really working hard on to, to put together, organize between the district, 'cause a lot of us feel the same way. And I don't even know that it changes anything, but it's just something to, to change, change up, I guess, the way things were presented and, and the way we could present, you know, to our constituency. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, but I think the last time we had the discussion, 'cause I remember very clearly the discussion, I think Hubbardston was looking for like a five-year projection per budget and which becomes very, very difficult to go, I mean, maybe, maybe like what you're proposing now. You meet fall, late fall, talk about the issues, what our concerns are, but you don't really have even any preliminary revenue numbers there, you, you really have to guess on it. So the five-year thing would be extremely difficult. I know, I know that Ryan was-
I think the five-year thing was for capital improvements.
No, 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 we, we have, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, so, we, we were in panic mode at that time. I'm just gonna, you know, I was right in the forefront of this. We were a little bit in panic mode at that time, and we just wanted to see if we could get something going. That's actually what spurred the, whatever was before the Q E M P, actually. When we all five towns got together, wrote a letter to Dr. Marshall, actually, and said, hey, please give us this five-year, you know, projection, and they came back from the district and said, thanks for the letter, we can't, why don't we all get together and talk about something? So that, that's actually, and then it started talking about closing schools, all that. So it, you know, went all over the place, but that was, so yes, that was the original plan. That's no longer something we need.
Would be ideal, you know.
But, but we realize it's unlikely, so this, this sort of next step is just something that we, we'd hope, you know, maybe in the future, you know, that at least it starts with a discussion about, you know, wants and needs and stuff together instead of apart, so that was it.
I, I wanna bring your attention just to one more slide, I know you're done with them, but, because it's, it's, it's easy enough for the district to create a five-year budget plan, but we're not a taxing authority and we have no say into how much fifty percent of our revenue is going to be. And the other part is town assessments. And we don't know what that's going to be based on the, the reports that you, you submit to D O R to determine what your local contribution is going to be. We can do the budget part, but budget and assessment are two different animals. I just wanna, and I wanna show you how disparate that is in a regional school district. It's, um, it's towards the end, maybe five pages from the end?
Can you give us the number?
I can't because Dr. Muir and I have different, we have one for the whole district and yours doesn't have it. It's like five pages from the back, it says Quabin member towns on the top. Five pages from that, Davey's on the top.
Page twenty-nine, Alis.
Thank you.
Okay, so because the regional co- local contribution is the base of the assessment formula in a regional school district, and because those numbers are based on each town's property level, property income, property values and income levels in your town, we don't know what those are. But you can see the disparity here, if you just take what the required local contribution for FY twenty-three is at this point in the governor's budget, because it does change in each part of the budget as it moves through the state. And the resident enrollment, you can see how different Barry and Hardwick is, are contributing eight thousand dollars, close to nine thousand dollars per student to the FY twenty-three budget as it currently is in a preliminary form with governor's revenue numbers. But Hubbardston pays eleven thousand dollars per student and New Braintree pays higher than that, eleven point, eleven seven per student. That's, that's the nature of the animal and that's what it's, why it's so hard for boards to understand what we do on our side because that there's such a difference in how the calculation is done in a regional school district. If you were in the town of Dudley, oh, you can't be, that's another town, town of Hudson, what happens in the town of Hudson? The select board gets together and says two percent budget, and two percent budget is two percent budget in Hut- in Hudson. But a two percent budget in Quabin is not a two percent assessment to Hubbardston. The formula is so different and there's so many moving parts. If we could have a crystal ball and know what D O R is gonna say your minimum required local contribution is for the next five years, I'd be a lot closer to be able to give you an assessment for the next five years.
Okay, and, and, go ahead.
I think the swings, I think at the time that we were talking about that five-year projection, Cheryl put together a chart, and I know she could do it again, in terms of the swings in required local contribution and how, you know, it's, it's, it's quite unpredictable in terms of what the required local contribution is from year to year. And that's what makes it difficult, that's such a big component of your, um, assessment. And yet that is completely unknown to us until it's published and, and again, as it, it changes in each iteration of the budget at the state level. But it also is not something that we can say, oh, well, you know, it went up by X amount of dollars. This year it's likely to go up by a similar amount next year. It's, it's highly variable and that's what makes it virtually impossible for us to make any predictions. As Cheryl said, we can easily, um, develop a five-year budget plan. Um, in fact, we, you know, we've done some planning with our ESTER money to level out the funding, to avoid a funding cliff at the end of the, um, ESTER funding cycle. But, um, and we're happy to engage in a conversation with select boards and finance committees at any point in the process. We're, we're not, um, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, we're not, um, we're, we're certainly amenable to comment to any meeting and as we start our budget process with the, with the school committee, um, you know, again, we're, we'd love to, we'll share as much information as, as you would like to have about what we're thinking about, what our needs are, all of that information. But in terms of giving you a predicted assessment number, it's not possible to do.
I don't think we're really asking for that right now, I, I think we're-
Well, that affects your budget, 'cause it's not the budget. The budget isn't what, I can give you, I gave you four-point-seven, my budget went up by four-point-seven, your assessment's twelve-point-
That's not what I mean either, you know?
Let me illustrate, Dan, look at another slide for me, member town assessments. Go back a few more pages, member town assessments. Sorry, I don't think we do anything.
I got, uh, fifty-two.
Okay? You just look down the first column, what the assessments based on this budget proposal are going to be. Thirteen-point-seven to Barry, thirteen-point-eight to Hardwick, twelve-point-nine, thirteen to Hubbardston, New Braintree, eleven percent. O-CAM, seven percent. Why is that so different? Why is this so different? You guys are all doing about the same thing, right? Turn the page. The base, required local contribution for O-CAM, actually went down. Oh, I'm sorry, it went, it was three-point-eight-eight, okay? I need glasses, I haven't got to get them yet. So Barry's minimum local contribution- So Barry's minimum local contribution, the base of the assessment went up by five point four, Hardwick ten percent, Hubbard's in four and a half percent.
Page twenty-seven. Oh, okay, I was in the wrong box.
New Braintree five, but Ocam only went up by three point eight. So that's gonna, their base is starting significantly lower. Turn the page and look at the resident enrollment for Ocam as compared to the rest of you. Another part of the, a part of the equation, Dan, is how many residents come from Hubbard's? You had the largest increase in residents this October as compared to last October, eleven percent. Where Ocam saw a reduction of two and a half percent. They went down in the number of kids they have. When you go down in the number of kids, you pay a smaller portion of the pie towards the assessment. So together with their base going up only by three point eight and yours going up by, I think I said ten or twelve?
Four.
And then you, your enrollment going up by eleven percent and Ocam's going down, look at the big shift in the assessment increases between Ocam and Hubbard's. I can't predict that they would go up only by three point eight and you'd go up by ten percent. And I can't even predict how many kids you're gonna have, because that changes every day, never mind every October. So those are two components of the assessment that swing the same way for Ocam and different way for Hubbard's. And that's why your assessment is so much greater than another member town.
Can I ask a question? So I, I'm good with that, I have a couple other questions, so, you know.
You're absolved of all, you know, sins that you've done.
What is your current balance for your E and D?
That's on the slide too.
I'm sorry, Heather, what did you say?
I was asking what the current balance was for E and D. I apologize, but there's thirty-two pages, so I'm not as familiar with this packet.
Neither am I, I just printed it up before I left the office.
We don't know yet, we're looking for E and D, access proficiency.
Thirty-eight maybe, or though that says just the district, district revenues and reserve is balanced at bottom. So your current certified E and D balance is five hundred and one thousand, six seventy-nine. Page nineteen, slide thirty-eight.
Thank you.
So you have a five hundred and one thousand dollar E and D, but, uh, E and D balance, but it looks like, uh, if I read this right, are we using any for F Y twenty-three, it shows no, right? Is that how I read this?
So for the last number of years, I think it's been the last five years, we've used four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of E and D to fund our budget. Ten thousand dollars of which went straight from E and D to our O P E P trust fund. So about fourteen, four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to reduce assessments. My recommendation to the school committee with a balance of five hundred and one is not to do that in F Y twenty-three. That would only leave us with a balance of less than seventy-five thousand dollars.
What was the balance in prior years when you've used it?
Very similar, very similar, I mean, it's gone down and down and down, I don't have that number with me. But, um, instead of that, so that there wasn't that hit, that you, that five towns were not paying that four hundred thousand dollars, I reduced the budget by four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and charged it off to school choice. So instead of us using one point seven million in school choice, we're using two point one million dollars in school choice. The effect is the same for your assessment. So I took that into consideration before I made my presentation to the school committee and my recommendation to the school committee that we can do that. So I didn't just take away four hundred thousand off the table, I reduced the budget by the same amount to another funding source, so the assessments would be the same, either way.
We don't believe you. I'm joking by saying that, but no, no, you know.
You want my math? You want the math?
Well, so I, I just, I think, um, cause, you know, I actually asked the same question Heather just asked during one of the budget. I typed it in, cause it was on Zoom or whatever, so that, you know, I just wanted to get everyone's attention by saying it like that. But, um.
So here's the math.
You know, we don't wanna use free cash either, right? And this is your free cash, um, to, for the operating budget, because that's essentially what you were doing. But go ahead, thank you for printing this out, I'm gonna pass it around.
It's the same effect, and yes, I did do that because I'm not gonna lie, what I did to the tables. Yes, I can, I can prove and I have proved to the school committee that another four hundred thousand dollars is being used in school choice. So interestingly enough, about two weeks ago, an email went around the business manager list serve. And, and another regional school district was asking, how much do you have in E and D and what do you use every year?
Yep.
So our balance in E and D by state statute can be up to five percent of next year's budget. Our E and D is one point four percent. Other districts around us, uh, Broughton Dunstable is three percent, Ralph Marhar is three and a half percent, Neshoba Valley Tech, four percent, South Shore Regional, four percent, Pathbinder, four point two, Monamoy, four point four, and Mendon Upton, four point seven. Compared to the, oh, these are only, what, eleven districts that actually answered the email, but we're significantly lower than any other school district. So when you have only five hundred thousand dollars on a thirty-five million dollar budget, that's not a good place to be.
Are any other school districts asking for any individual town to go up an increase of twelve percent?
I don't know where anybody is, anyone else is, but I.
But it's relevant, isn't it?
But, but I don't, but I'm.
The two pieces, so if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna ask other districts, right, how much, how much, um, E and D do you have and what percentage is it of your larger budget? Then isn't it just as relevant to ask about what their actual percentage of increases is, are to their actual individual towns? Because as Dan had said, your E and D is like our free cash, right? The amount of money you're currently asking us is preposterous, right? There's no way on earth we'd be able to come up with that, we'd have to shut down an entire department, right? So that's what you're asking of us, but at the same point, you haven't even come to us saying, we've done everything we can, we've used every spare cent, you know, we're strapped, we've tried cutting the budgets, we've tried doing zero-based budgeting, we've tried doing everything. And you know what, at this time, we need the town's help, cause we're just not getting there. But that's not what I'm hearing, I'm hearing we're only picking and choosing what information we're sharing. We're doing partial pieces.
I take offense to that, I, I do take offense to that.
Is it possible, Cheryl, to go back and ask for the rest of the information?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't ask this information, Heather, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this, I responded to it. And we're on a list serve, so when other responses came in, I gathered the data. I wasn't asking for, asking this information. And I do take offense that we're not giving you all the information. First of all, every year we zero-based budget. And I've said time and time again, tonight, we are in the very early stages of the state budget. Our funding comes from the state budget. We will know more on Wednesday, we will know more in June. If the House and the Senate don't match, we will know more when conference committee gets together. And we make adjustments, he's the chair of the budget subcommittee, we make adjustments all along the way. It's not that we're not sharing, this is where we are today.
So what are, I guess my question is, what happens when we're not able to pay what you're asking?
You vote no on the town floor and we move on, we take the next steps.
So going back to what Dan had said earlier, and I think, I think this is where you were going, Dan, is I think it's really important moving forward for us really to come up with a plan at the beginning of each year as to not just, you know, what concerns we have, but also making sure that you guys, when you're putting your budget together, you understand our ability to pay, right? So if you look at the budget David proposed, David, what was the increase amount that we thought we were gonna be able to swing?
Somewhere between two and a half to five percent.
Two and a half, five percent, which came out to, what was it, one point something million increase? Something of sorts.
Oh, you're talking about.
Or a hundred, a couple hundred, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Try that again, wasn't it like a hundred and eighty-nine thousand?
Yeah, something like that to, to, to about three hundred, three sixty.
So for you guys to understand that our ability to pay is about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars off the get-go, I think would be really helpful for you to know as well as other towns, when you're putting the budget together, so we can start closer together and not have this large gap. Other, some regional districts, I'm sure do the same thing, other regional districts don't. They find a way to work from the very get-go. So we don't have to do a process where we go to town meeting and say, well, we can't pay that. We voted down and then you have to go back to the, back to the drawing board again. It ju- it just seems like a silly process to me, that's all.
So Cheryl, you just handed something out, thank you, um, you just handed something out for us, uh, to us. Can, can you just explain to us what, what this is? This was the calculating fiscal year twenty-three operating and capital assessments, operating assessment increase and total assessment impact.
So I think the first page has some red boxes, red words on it.
It does.
This is how the current assessments are being calculated. He's not even probably the, the assessment that will be going to your assessment letter that will be out on April thirtieth.
Sounds good.
So the budget is thirty-seven point two-six million. That's been reduced by the four hundred thousand dollars that we charged it off to school choice. So you see in the next red number, two hundred and ten thousand, that's without the four hundred thousand dollars that we usually have been putting in for the last several years.
Okay.
Highlighted in yellow is Hubbard's assessment, five point seven million dollars. The next sheet, same exact formula, but the budget would have been thirty-seven point six-nine million dollars and we would have used another four hundred thousand dollars in E and D, six hundred and thirty-seven total in the green. And again, highlighted in Hubbard's, exact same number. Reducing the budget with reduced revenue from the, from the district or increasing the budget and increasing the revenue would give you the same bottom line number. It's the same impact.
Of course it does.
Of course it does, thank you, Mrs. Bray, of course it does. You don't believe me. That's what he said, I don't believe you.
He was, he was giving, just giving you a little hard time.
I think you know me well enough, my daughter. Um, so, okay, well, thank you for the explanation. So I guess why, you know, I'll just throw it back, why do we ever use E and D? If we can always just have the same number?
There's another slide in your packet. Over the last fourteen years, the district has taken six point, over six point five million dollars from E and D to help fund the assessments of member towns. Fourteen years, six point five million dollars. When we have it, we share it. I think seventy-five, I am one person directed by the school committee to put the budget together and put together, put the projections. They have the choice to vote, these two people right here. They can say to me at the meeting that we're gonna have the last week of April, put it back. But I can't put it back and still charge it to school choice as well, we need, we need, we need that money.
I remember the years of a million bucks, eight hundred thousand, all that stuff was coming out.
We don't, we don't have it, when our balance is only five hundred. There's a chart in there of how many, how much we've used in E and D over the last fourteen years.
Yep.
Nearly six point six million dollars.
Just, yeah, just a quick comment, you know, with two people out of, there's fifteen people on the school committee, okay? There may be even some people on the school committee who don't think that we're actually addressing all the needs in our budget. Not from probably this town, but perhaps from some other towns. So the, the other thing, the other question I had is, is just the Hubbard's resident. What percentage of your operating budget is free cash?
Well, that varies, um.
Roughly.
Uh, you know, I, I.
Five percent, seven percent?
Zero this year.
Zero this year and zero for next year projected.
Right, so, but in previous years, um, some number more than zero. I, I'd have to look at the numbers, I don't know offhand. I was just talking generally about, you know, the way we have for, for many, many years had to pay for things. So that's all I was getting at, so that, that's, you know, I, I understand, we can get you that info, just like you said, this is some info you can get us, we can get you that too, I don't know, I'll, I'll, we're ahead.
Well, as our E and D and your free cash, it's a number at a certain point in time.
It's a, it's a what?
It's a number at a certain point in time.
That's right, that's right.
So I can look up what your free cash is on the, on the internet, on D O R, but you may have already appropriated that for this year. So I wouldn't know exactly how much you have in free cash.
I also think one, there's another slide toward the end, it's actually slide sixty-two, and this is a little bit off topic, but I, I do. Yes, sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
It's the, uh, second slide from the end of the presentation. And it looks like, it looks like this, it's a chart with, um, two dots, you know, top and left. Um, the reason I'm bringing this up is, I just, I really wanna, um, respond to the concern that, eh, that, um, was raised earlier that it doesn't feel like the district is considering the needs of the town or, um, trying to work with the towns. This, um, this slide shows, oh, actually, this is, this is not the slide that I wanted to show you. I apologize. Um, I don't know, I'm not even sure this slide is included, but I apologize. But we have, um, over the course of the last four years, um, we have received luckily some rural school aid. And, um, we have chosen to use that rural school aid for capital improvements at the middle high school that wa- that were necessary, that would have, um, required the towns to pay a capital assessment to our regional school district. Um, that has saved our member towns, I want to say over seven hundred and almost eight hundred thousand dollars. I can give you the full amount collectively, um, over the last couple of years because we have, um, we have had to replace a chilling tower at the middle high school, we had to replace a fire panel at the middle high school. Um, we have done some very significant middle high school repairs that were absolutely necessary. We could have used that rural schools money to do other things, like establish new programs for students. We didn't, we chose to use it for things that our towns would otherwise have to pay for. And I want you to know that, and I wanna emphasize that, because we do try whenever we can to provide support for the towns. We understand that you have limited resources. We understand that you are trying to, um, support community needs as well as school district needs. But it's important for us to, for you to, I am hoping that you can be patient and let the process play out. The process will, we do believe, your assessment will go down because historically, through each iteration of the budget at the state level, um, funding increases. And also, over time, we find out new information about what we need in the school district. I'll give you a pretty concrete example. We look at school enrollment and grade level enrollment on a very regular basis. We have some, some elementary, um, school enrollments right now that are on the cusp of perhaps if we had two or three less students in a grade level in one of the schools, we might not need to replace a teacher that's, that is retiring. Right now, that position is in the budget, because we anticipate based on the enrollment, right now, we need that position. Two months from now or six weeks from now, we might look at that enrollment and say, some children have moved out, we don't have to replace their teacher. We are in the process of, of high school scheduling. We have a master's schedule that is built on student requests for courses. When the, when that process plays out, we may find that we could reduce the position in the high school. I'm not guaranteeing that, but I, what I'm saying is, we start building our budget in December and as we go through each month, it's possible for more and more information to come that will help us refine what we're requesting and also what our revenue source is, what our revenue stream is to support what the students need. So we do ask you to please be patient, let the process play out. We understand that you, that this assessment is very difficult, probably impossible for you to handle. We recognize that. But please let us, you know, stay in communication with you and we will share additional information as the process plays out. And as Cheryl said, we'll get more information about the House budget on Wednesday. That should have some good news minimally about, um, the, um, transportation reimbursement. It may have more, better news about, um, other, other funding sources as well.
I have a question. Um, I might be way off the wall, I usually am, but. So you have a chart here on your history of declining enrollment.
Where are you at?
Number thirty-two, page sixteen. And that's what, for the past twenty years, fifteen years? Now how is, how does your staffing chart compare to this chart? I, I know it's gonna sound crazy that I'm asking it, but I just wanna know, are you level staffed right now with what you had fifteen years ago, or do you have more staff now than you had fifteen years ago?
We have less staff, but I mean, Cheryl.
Do you have a chart that shows with your declining enrollment, how your staffing is?
I have a historical chart that was not part of the presentation.
So that's not part of this?
No.
So you're, so that part of the budget, the administrative fee and what everybody gets paid is not part of this?
No, the staffing chart is not, was not part of this presentation, but I do, I do have a historical chart that, that does show the decline in staffing. And the staffing is significantly different today than it was fifteen.
So we have different positions than we had.
Created positions or needed positions?
State mandated.
All.
State mandated, that's what I'm looking for.
You know, a lot of state mandated positions. And, and, in addition, in this particular budget, you know, we've listened, you know, some of the newer positions, the intervention positions, the tutor positions are the result of dialogue with parents who've come up and said, hey, listen, over the last two years, yeah, granted, you kept everybody in school in the elementary schools, which most districts didn't do. All, I'd say ninety-five percent of the districts the state didn't do. But our, our students still had problems with, you know, the mask thing, the social distancing thing, the social interaction thing. So please help us out and let's get these kids back to where they belong. And, and that's the reason for some of these positions in the budget, particularly in the newly requested positions, okay? And, and that's, you know, you know, when. And, and that's, you know, you know, when, when I look at this, when I look at our district, right? I'm actually, I'm actually very proud of our district. And, and Heather talked before about, you know, budgets. If I remember correctly, when I first started on the school board, I mean, we, we had requests of like ten and eleven percent. I mean, of almost like a wish list. This is not the same situation today. It's, it's just not. And, you know, two hundred and ninety-two students opt to come into this district because of the resources that we have and the quality education that we have. I think it's what, the second highest in the state? Second highest in the state, you know, regular district like this. And we only have, we had, you know, we had sixty students that sort of like, um, choiced out during the pandemic. And then we got into this year and thirty of the sixty students decided that, yeah, Quavon wasn't so bad, so we're coming back. So, you know, we have a pretty good school district here and, you know, I, I, I guess we really don't wanna decimate it. I mean, as, as taxpayers, as people who have children in school, grandchildren in school, and that's the bottom line.
Billy?
Also, just to touch on that chart that we do have, we've seen it many times with the staffing pattern along with, and I'm sure Cheryl will be happy to share that
Yeah.
um, with you, but it's not like, if we lost a hundred kids district wide, it isn't like, okay, we can lose two second grade teachers in Hubbardston Center School.
I understand that. I'm just looking for a chart that if you have anything that goes back the same amount of time as your declining students,
So, but over historically.
I would just like to look at the number. That's all I'm asking for.
We do, but what's Mark, Mark is also explaining, especially since the pandemic, our students are suffering a lot of social, emotional and different needs.
Oh, and I agree. Psychologically too, and I agree.
And our low income students tend to come needing more support as well.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
And that's why the funding is typically higher for those.
I agree.
So, the staffing patterns may also have shifted along with decline. But there is a significant decline in personnel, and that always is taken into consideration from a school committee and the administration standpoint, so.
Okay. I was just asking if there was a chart.
And, and twenty, twenty years ago, the school didn't have all the duties that it currently has now. There were other agencies that you could rely on to help you out, whether it's D S S, Department of Mental Health, whatever.
Yeah.
Now, it's up to, it's up to teachers.
They closed them all. They closed all your mental health facilities.
Right, right. So, basically.
No, I worked in a prison. We became a mental health facility.
And we're required to.
And, and that's exactly, exactly kind of what's happening with us. We need more counselors. We need to deal with the, the social interaction issues and
Yeah.
and, and we're not the same school in the same makeup.
Right. Well, twenty years ago, teacher didn't have to, didn't have to pay for her supplies. Now, teachers pay out of their pocket for the supply of their classrooms.
Okay, hold on one sec. Heather, did you have something that you wrote down?
I just wanna follow up, um, so you mentioned that we're the second highest school choice in the state.
Go back to you, dude.
Do we have any slides in here with the analysis? I know some towns or some districts do a school choice analysis regularly to see, you know, if it's more beneficial or harmful for cost of number of students coming in. Are they actually filling holes or are they causing us to have to bring on more teachers and more staff?
We only accept, accept school choice students if they're filling holes.
Okay.
We never accept students that would push a class over a threshold that would cause us to hire an additional staff number.
Okay.
So, that's how we make our decisions around accepting school choice students.
Okay. And do we, is there a chart you can send Cheryl with school choice numbers over the years, just so we can see what's happening?
In the packet.
Do you know where it is in the packet?
I can, I can. Your packet's different than mine, so. There's a chart, there's a chart in there. There's actually a chart in there that also says that we're actually starting to reverse the trend, not only on school choice, kids going to, out to school choice, but also to charter schools. It seems in the last two years, turn around, we have fewer than ever students, especially from Hubbardston, going to charter schools, and we have less school choice students out than we have in a number of years.
So, there's more staying in, in the Quavons.
Right.
Staying.
When they school choice out, we have to take them out.
Well, that shows how good of a job Quavon's doing, you know, technically. That's what it shows me.
As the former in terms of.
Yeah, so I, I, let me just say something overriding. So, um, so I, I, you know, I've been doing this a while now, and, um, uh, I, I actually think, and I said this to the select board, you know, somewhat recently, that the relationship between the school district and the town of Hubbardston is as strong as it's ever been. I actually, I, it, it, I don't, shouldn't say ever been, as, as, but definitely since I've been involved. I know I just pissed Cheryl off tonight, um, by saying that. I know, and you're not piss offable. I get the whole thing, but I'm, I'm just.
Interesting.
But, but still, overall, I, I just, um, there's an inevitability about the emotional nature of this because we feel like we have a job to do. You guys feel like you have a job to do. We get, I, I get all that. Specifically, we work pretty close together on a number of things over the last, specifically five or six years. So, um, it's, it's admirable, the pride in the school that, that you all have. It's clear and it's admirable. And Mark, you were touching on that before, you know, you don't wanna decimate. I, I understand that as well. Um, and I think, I think I, it's hard for us to be patient, and I know you want us to be patient, and, and because of the way it's gone in the past and the way things usually get better. And all we wanna say is, why do we have to, why do we go through this and why do we all get mad at each other? You know, that, that's what we feel, you know, and, and I know there's a certain, uh, process that has to go through. And so, I, I, just coming back again to what, um, and again, I was in front of other select boards talking about it. Um, it, 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 as much as we may not feel like we're gonna have as much influence as we want, um, I think a lot of this stuff goes, not a lot of it, all of it by any means, but it, it can go away if we're more involved. It just will. If we, and I know you tell us we can be as involved as much as we want. I understand all that. We can come to every meeting, but we can't come to every meeting, all that. So, I, I just, um, I, I just need to say that out loud again, is because we, we did have a plan prior to sort of COVID coming of us towns getting together and, and not just saying, this is what we can afford, deal with it. Because that, that's not a partnering, uh, um, way of going about things either, but anyway. So, I, I just wanted to sort of say that out loud again because I, 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 I do think we've worked really hard over the last five, six, seven years to, to get into a good place together. And I, I don't want that to go away, but it's impossible for us to not be emotional about big numbers. We just have to be. So, um, anyway, that was just a quick little diatribe.
Perhaps we can come up with some mechanics as to how that might happen. And you mentioned, I'm aware that, that at least in the, um, for the public postings, you start your budget subcommittee meetings in January, but there's some activity before January. I'm imagining and getting, getting some things, some information together so that you can have a meaningful January conversation. When would, when does that usually start? Is that December or is that a little earlier in the fall?
It starts in October.
Okay.
I start in October. I don't go to the school committee until January, but
Right, but you start then.
We have three hundred and sixty-some odd employees. And we have a, when we have contracts that are in place, and I know what next year's budget is going to be. I start in October. Sometimes we don't have, I can't see what old gentleman.
No, I don't know.
Sometimes we don't have, we have six different bargaining, here she is, six different bargaining, uh, groups that we negotiate with. We have a set schedule for F Y twenty-three. Then it's done. Yes, yes. So, we have, sometimes we were doing really well until March twenty-twenty hit, then all of those negotiations came, came, came to a halt.
Well, weren't we all?
We were in the middle of negotiating with all six groups in March of twenty-twenty.
When would it make sense then, since you started in October, that's obviously prob, I've been thinking, too early for us to be interacting with you?
And maybe even way too early next year when we have negotiation, we have six units to negotiate.
Following year. Well, but when, so when, when would it make sense for us to, for us to start to have a conversation? November, December? Are you gonna make us, should we wait until January when, when I'm kinda feeling like that might be a little too late?
See, what's.
We want some, I want some mechanics.
We get our cost centers, right?
Yeah. We, you know, we, we are, Cheryl's asking our cost center managers, like our principals and our planning facilities people to give her their needs for the following year by, by.
I usually want them before they leave for Thanksgiving break.
Thanksgiving. Okay.
This year, we said till, till after Christmas break, 'cause it's been a very rough two years for our principals. So, they gave me their numbers, went before they left for Christmas.
Mm-huh.
Um, that's when I usually have everything, everything from them, but I start earlier 'cause I have to start with the salaries and all of the fixed charges.
When do you present your information to the budget subcommittee? Is it at the January, is it at the January meeting? So, that's the first that you learn of it?
January.
January.
Yes, yes.
All right, well, then that sounds like that would be the first that we would hear of it also.
It does, and it. It, it almost sounds like we should be one of the, in addition to the, would you call them cost centers?
Yes. Mm-huh.
We're one. Um, so.
Well, that's our first, yeah.
I, I know, but you, you don't know how much we can, uh, uh,
No, I know.
or how much we want or whatever. I'm, I'm, you know, sort of making that up.
We don't even know when we're gonna assess to the town.
See, but that's the diff, that's the difference, Dan. Yeah, that's the difference, Dan. You're a revenue source for us.
Between the revenue and the, and the expenses.
No, I, no, I understand that point. We're not asking, we're not asking you to do the assessments. That's, that's our job.
But if you hear it from us, you can, I know.
We, we do that. We, we start to sniff that out and figure that out on the finance committee early. So, we're not looking to, looking to, so, so we can kinda read some tea leaves and, and get a back of the envelope sense of what's happening. We know that nobody has precise numbers. That's our job. We're interested in the number that you're going to propose because that then fills, fills into this spreadsheet for us, right? I mean, that's the, that's the missing, missing piece for us. So, and that kinda ties in more or less, sort of maybe, with when, uh, David and Ryan talk to all the departments and start to get a sense of what their numbers are and so forth and so on, and start to cook up our own thing. So, it's sounding to me like that first January meeting might be a, a good thing for us to be invited to?
You're always invited.
No, I know, but that means I gotta look at the website and I gotta drill this out, and I'm looking for more of a, more of a conversation.
We have formal conversations.
Nobody really wants to see through my.
Official in there.
Sure, yeah. Not, not, yeah, I can go look at the website. That's, yeah.
Absolutely. That's, that's not a problem at all. We're happy to, we are happy to send out an official invitation to lock doors and.
So, if we can. Yeah, so if we could maybe do that, then that'll give us the heads up and, and don't have to try to remember to look at a website.
Yeah, absolutely. Nope, that's not a problem at all.
And that would, that would at least get you, get you on our front of mind and we could start to dialogue then.
May I ask a question? Uh, are we the first or second or third, uh, board that you've been to with the preliminary, admittedly, the preliminaries, uh, figures?
Question, question.
And if, if, if we are, have you been getting similar reactions from other towns?
We're, um, in Barry tomorrow, so.
So, we're the first?
You are the first.
Okay.
Excuse me.
But there was a public hearing that there were a number of, of, uh, you know, town members on, Dan was on it.
Yeah, only, only, only our. I don't think, I think only Hubbardston is actually, was.
Really?
I don't think so.
That won't surprise me. Maybe.
Hard with Cheryl, Cheryl.
You guys are ahead of the curve.
Cheryl was there, yeah.
Oakham used to go. Oakham used to be more present.
Yeah.
I think this is, um, I don't know. No, I know, but I'm, I'm just thinking of Claire for, for ancient history.
They absolutely have. Yep.
No. That's why.
The public hearing is where I would like to see members of the finance committees and, and select boards, because that's where I go through everything, all nuts and bolts.
And they didn't know they weren't gonna have a big increase.
But it was one year when we had absolutely no one that came to the public hearing. I mean, it's a thirty-five, now thirty-seven million dollar budget. I've taken more time than you probably wanted tonight. But usually, we're given ten minutes or fifteen minutes on agenda to go through a thirty-seven million dollar budget that I make Mr. Wiggler sit through. How long the other night? An hour and forty-five minutes. It's not easy to go through, and I know it was difficult for me to fly through these pages with you, but otherwise it will take that long. And this is a condensed version of that public hearing, but that's where we do it. It's the public hearing for the public. The finance committee and the school committee have already heard the same information for three meetings.
All right, well, uh, uh, I was just gonna say, I, I don't, I, we're not gonna figure out anything else tonight. This was a.
No. No, I'm interested in that, in our process and our conversation.
Yeah, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't even saying that to you or anything like that.
No, 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 I know.
But, um.
Well, you should have been.
Okay, I was, but I got, then I got afraid when you looked at me. So, um, we, you know, we, thank you for letting us know, um, what's next. Um, and it sounds like you've promised the world Wednesday, which is great. That's what we all heard. Just kidding.
Only because they promised us.
So.
I think the state is in decent financial shape this fiscal year.
Okay, so.
There's also a chart in there that shows you where all the state went this year.
They're in a lot better shape than they're telling you.
They are, and typically, an alderman governor, maybe.
Yes.
They have a lot of money.
Well, look, there's a chart in there that shows you, there's thirty-five million dollars more going to Springfield this year.
Yeah, I did.
Thirty-five million dollars to Springfield Public Schools.
I don't know where the, I, I guess they misjudged their revenues because they have unadobe.
Those are the big cities, yeah.
From what I read from a legislator yesterday. Now, I'll address it. We'll see.
So, fingers crossed it comes to Quavon.
The, the, um, the other thing that Cheryl mentioned is that the, um, foundation aid is based on a four point, was it four point nine percent? Inflation rate, four point five, four point five, excuse me, and we all know it's much higher than that.
Yeah, where are we at?
There is discussion in the legislature of raising that inflation factor in the foundation budget. Whether that will play out or not, um, remains to be seen, but that could change things significantly in terms of our foundation number. So, there is hope that we could see great improvement. I don't, we're not here to promise anything.
No.
But we, we do think, we are hopeful that things will improve. His, as I said, historically, if you look at the, the number that's proposed at the, at the, um, public hearing every year in our district, it always gets better. Um, and, you know, some, some years m- more better than others, but, um, but it, you know, I, I think we'll be, we'll be having a different discussion at some point in the future.
So, in, so, um, in parallel to, uh, that happening on your side, um, you know, what causes a lot of the angst sometimes, um, and, and, you know, public sentiment is we have to scheme for whatever scenario is coming, uh, from bad to less bad to a little bit less bad, you know, all those scenarios. So, um, and, and I know you're gonna get us the info as soon as you can and all that, but I'm just basically saying it out loud that, that our, uh, discussions go to, okay, there goes the fire department. You know, we don't say it because we're trying to make people, you know, watch our videos. You know, we, we're, we, you know, have a certain amount of money we can spend or not, so that's, that's sort of the crazy talk we have to have. Um, and so, um, you know, that, that sort of goes on in, in parallel, um, along with it. So, I just basically saying that those things happen at the same time.
But we should really, we, we should really talk about what the source of that problem is.
So, schools, public safety. It's not right.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we, yeah.
Right? It's not anything to do with town of Hubbardston. It's not anything to do with any school district.
Yep.
It's the, it's the budget process at the state level. As Cheryl mentioned, years ago, whatever the number was, the number was. Everybody could take it to the bank. Everybody had good information on which to make their own plans. And, you know, I was in a meeting last week with legislators at Pittsburgh State and with a bunch of superintendents, and, you know, we said the same thing. They, they're not necessarily in control of the process either unless as a body they decide to make changes to it. But that's really the problem is that we don't have, none of us have the information that we need to, to move our process forward, yet we're obligated to move the process forward at a particular rate, right?
Well, you have, you have to plan for it, I guess, yeah.
You have a fiscal year end and you have a fiscal year beginning, and their, their process doesn't.
And we have deadlines to give you an assessment by.
Right, and their process doesn't match that, and that's really why the angst happens. It's, it's, you know, we, we don't like to have these conversations with, with all of you either. We'd love to come in with, with the numbers right off the bat. And then if they don't work out, then we talk about the real numbers, but it's, it's as, it's as uncomfortable and emotional for you as it is, for us as it is for you, to be honest. You know, we don't, we don't like giving you bad news. It's, it's, you know, it's just, but it's a process.
If you goo, if you Google the Commonwealth of Massachusetts budget process, the governor has it right on his page that it may not be finished until August. Until the state is already into the next fiscal year, will his process be finished?
Yep. Says a lot.
Yeah.
All right.
He's on the way out, so he doesn't care.
All right, so we have, we have, we have some additional business to get to tonight.
Okay, thank you for your time.
But, but thanks very much for coming in and, um, you know.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for doing an excellent job.
Taking, taking all the time you.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
All right, it is eight twenty-six. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Eight, in favor of I?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. All right, hey, we gotta do it. Um.
We need to renegotiate the our, our, our member agreement. That's what I think.
Oh, which member?
The Quavon, the district membership, member agreement.
Regional agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
That's quite a process.
Yeah, well, it's.
Overdue, or, yeah.
Smelling up the room. We need to, we need to fix it.
All right.
All right, great, thanks.
Okay, well, thanks, finance committee, for coming in. Um, all right, so we've got a, um, we've got a few other important items that are, are on our, uh, agenda tonight, um.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, the next one, uh, which has been something that has been troubling us for, I don't. Uh, the next one, uh, which has been something that has been troubling us for, I don't know how long now, um, but it is new business, Roman numeral five, C, which is the building inspector discussion for solution for next fiscal year. There have been some um, some recent um, uh, opportunities, for lack of a better way to put it, that that we're investigating now. David, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Right, so we've put together two revolving funds for the plumbing gas inspector and the wiring inspector. Uh, that'll be for FY twenty-three, and I think that's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Um, it's the building commissioner inspector part that we're still working on. Uh, I believe, Chris, you were approached by a couple of towns who had some ideas.
Um, yeah, at the meeting out there in Barry, I was approached by the um.
At the meeting, yeah, yeah. Was it Ocam or?
Ocam, yeah, the Ocam Select Board Member. And they are in need of a building inspector also.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
As luck would have it, just prior to the meeting, so. He inquired to us and I said, wow, we are also. What a coincidence.
And he came up to us just as soon, so.
So were you able to reach out to him and see what he had to say?
I was, I reached out to the administrator and she and I are playing phone tag on that. In the meantime, I uh talked to the town administrator for Barry. And she's interested in sharing services and we're gonna get together and work out what do we need to do. It's pretty clear that we need to increase our administrative support for the land use department in general. Um, so we're gonna take some hours and move them from one building to the other. So it's still a work in progress, but I'm hopeful that we can, by next meeting, have an inter municipal agreement with Barry on this and have some sense of Ocam.
Would be great.
So the um, uh, we we, in our packet, we had a uh.
Job description.
Job description. Um, wanna talk about that a little bit and where where that came from?
Uh. Uh, this job description is something that I've I've put together based upon uh job descriptions that uh were uh available f- uh from the net and from uh various human uh re- resource uh paying classification and job description studies that were done in the local re- area.
Okay, so this is something we would probably share with Barry or some other other uh towns if we were able to sort of go together in on something?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I noticed there were, oh, go ahead.
Did Barry lose theirs or did, what, why are they looking, or they just now have room for another? What's what's the deal?
They they have, they have, they have some capacity because they're wo- they're providing building inspector services for Hardwick.
Yeah.
Uh, and they've heard that New Braintree might be looking for a uh, uh, building inspector as well. So this is something they've been thinking about on their own.
All right, so trying to group us all together as a basically now school district, also building inspector district.
Yeah. Right.
So, Cori, so I was involved with, I was actually involved with the regional agreement down in Barry um, for the building commissioner because we actually had to hire a new building commissioner when I was interim. So I had double checked with the administrative assistant down there. So it shows right now that they currently have a Peterchamp, Hardwick, and New Braintree on their agreement with Barry. So I, if I remember correct, David, when you had checked with them a while back, maybe it was the VSO?
It was VSO.
Okay, but are we confident, first of all, did you have any initial discussions with them, having to be the number of hours a week that they would be able to provide us? Because I know in Barry currently, what happens is the building commissioner spends the majority of his or her time in the town of Barry and does some remote office time in those other two places. I'm just curious as to what the content of your discussion was and the coverage that you discussed.
Yeah, so I was looking for somebody that could work for us for twenty hours a week. I think that's um, the maximum that we need, all other things being equal.
Okay.
Um, we would kick in money for that uh, that person in order for us to have the service and we would kick in money for additional administrative support, so this individual wouldn't have to be doing all the paperwork for the town.
So that would leave twenty hours for this individual that serviced the other three towns in this agreement?
Yeah.
Is it actually, is the person over in Barry though currently employed at thirty-five hours or forty hours a week?
Uh, don't know that answer.
Okay. Because I feel, I I feel like my recollection was thirty-five.
Let me, let me, let me. Let me, let me just say this, is that I'm planning twenty hours. If it has to be fifteen hours a week, um, I think we could pull that together.
Because right now, currently, their only gardener is here technically, um, two half-days a week. But there's.
Two half-days a week, what's that, eight hours?
Two, half-days a week. They come here at lunch and they do whatever they have scheduled in the afternoon on what, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I believe, are the two days.
Yeah.
Um, but there's also four different inspectors technically.
But is that, is that, are those two days a week servicing the need?
No, no, we've, we've gotten all sorts of backlog, uh, zoning.
Well. That's because they're not, it's not getting, it, one person's not doing it.
Well, that was another reason, right? Yeah, the, uh, we had extraneous, extenuating circumstances.
Yes. But the rest of them are up to par, to my knowledge, the.
Plumbing, gas, and wiring are doing just fine.
Yeah. Yeah, and the same with Rick, with the regular building inspections. It's.
Yeah.
The decisions and the, you know, the commercials and like the, yeah, the zoning enforcement, that stuff, that's all gone to hell.
So we just need a way forward. That's what we need, is is a direction.
Yeah.
Um, and the options for the direction right now are, in no particular order, get our own, dedicated,
Mm-hmm.
which is gonna be too expensive probably. I don't wanna speak for everybody, but that would be an expensive proposition anyway, I would think. Or um, find a partner. And where the stands right now with finding a partner is limited to discussions with Barry and maybe Ocam. Is that accurate, sort of where we're at scenario?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, okay, I mean, um, we currently have an agreement that's expiring on June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
So time is of the essence, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, I I would hope maybe by our next meeting, couple weeks, we could um, you know, find out, not necessarily put a job application out there or a d- a job open, uh, vacancy out there, but at least know from the towns that we're currently discussing whether or not there's, you know, you know, the the appetite for us to join them. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what happened, um, Dan mentioned those two options. What happened to the third option partnering with um, Maynard Building Inspector?
Uh, that's not gonna work for a long-term solution.
Okay.
Is it currently working now?
Yeah, he's working full-time for Maynard and and, you know, he wouldn't be able to take on Hubbardston.
No, but he was supposed to come out for like a week's worth of work to clean stuff up, correct?
Yeah, so.
Where is he at on, where where are we at on that? Because I've been in contact, Mary asked again for her determination on that one piece of property from last June.
Mm-hmm.
I'm like, I don't know what to tell you, Mary. I am sorry. I'm gonna keep staying on it though. So this is me staying on it. So where are we at with somebody cleaning up the current mess that we have right now?
Well, there's uh some legal work that we need to do that I've got KP Law working on.
Okay.
Um, and I just need to sit down with Mallory and uh and figure out what are the houses on fire are and uh address them as they, as they're needed.
I guess the question, though, David, was, is that person on site and have they started doing any work?
No, that was only a Band-Aid.
But has the Band-Aid been in place?
No.
Okay, so Band-Aid never happened?
Not yet.
Okay, so no Band-Aid yet. Is that answer?
Yes, do we know when Band-Aid is, do we have a timeframe of Band-Aid or are we just gonna keep bleeding?
I expect to be in front of you next uh time you meet and have a solution to all of this.
Okay.
So either recommendation as to how to move forward or some sort of draft agreement in place so that we can make this this work.
Right, or or the, at the wheels have fell, fa- fallen off of all options and we have to, you know, s- start over with our options. I mean, whatever it is it is, so just tell us to a straight when when we get there.
Yeah.
You know, um, so that we know what direction we have to go in and what bullet we have to bite.
Uh, please double down your efforts with that gentleman from Ocam because he he was proactive and approached me and he was really ambitious about the whole situation, so that they're not returning your calls is a little disconcerting.
All right. Do you remember his name? I don't, thank you.
Probably one of three names listed on their website, yes.
It was a gentleman, I can tell you that.
It's usually a three-member board. And just one more follow-up question on that, David, how much money did we currently budget for this time for the uh building uh commissioner role or position in the budget?
I think I threw in somewhere between sixty and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I believe sixty-five, I just cares.
Was it um, Steve LeBarre, do you know? Did he have a mustache? Was he um, I yeah, I don't know if you know.
Don't know, don't know. What's your third question?
I'm trying to remember. He just, he just came up.
I don't know what else to say. You got a picture of him?
No, but I have him on, I mean, I've known him for a while because he used to be on the school committee and and he's, you know, the chair of the select board. And I, when I went, this whole thing I talked about when I went to each town, um.
Well, he was there at the school committee meeting, so there's a good chance it was him.
Well, I just, I know him, I I just thrown it out there.
What was the name?
Steve LeBarre.
There's no Steve on Ocam's, unless their website is totally wrong because I'm staring at it.
Then he might be off it now, I I.
Okay, there's Donald Bradford and Lucy.
Okay.
Was it Lucy?
It's not Lucy.
Definitely not Lucy. Donald or Brad?
Is that Lucy, Lucy? Remember Lucy from the?
Those are the three names on their town website.
Lucy, Lucy from from home?
No, she's been on the.
From Ocam.
Lucy.
At any rate, someone, there's three people, make sure you can track down.
School committee stuff for a while when he was on that QI.
I mean, you were there, you.
All right, no, I never there, you saw it.
Yeah, obviously they changed.
Okay. All right, um, okay, anything else on that item? Or we sort of know where we're at?
Yeah.
Trying to make progress here.
I love progress.
All right, so next item is the review of the ATM articles and closing the warrant uh for fiscal year twenty-three. So, um, do we have them in front of us?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've, we've been given a draft of this before uh in our packet as well. Um, so I I don't know, David, uh, I guess typically we sort of run through them pretty quick.
Yeah, I think we can do a lot of good work in a short period of time. I know it's, I know it's late, so I don't keep you on necessarily.
Sounds good. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Articles one through five are on the consent agenda.
Yep.
Any objection?
Uh, the consent, I have none.
Article six is uh something that I would like to see on the consent agenda for the future. But because it's new, it, I'm taking it off the consent agenda so we can talk about it at town meeting.
Okay.
Um, it's the ability for the town treasurer to borrow in anticipation of future revenue if we ever get into a cash flow problem. And Dan, you remember the conversations we were having back in October, November, was one, very worried that we were not gonna be, have enough cash in December to cover payroll and ARPA came to the rescue and that became not an issue.
Right.
But at that time, I looked at our tool chest of municipal financial gadgets and this was not there. And this is something that should be on for uh every consent agenda from now until the end of time.
All right. Got that?
End of time.
Article seven is the.
Revolvers?
Is the revolving funds. It does three things. First of all, it sets the FY spending limit for the existing revolving funds. If you turn the page, you'll see that I've created two new revolving funds for plumbing gas inspection and wiring inspection. Uh, that'll pay for those services. And then finally, um, to decommission four revolving funds that either have no money in it or haven't been used forever and return that money to the original pot that uh that came from. There's no cost on taxes for this.
Sounds good.
Okay. Article eight is the budget. Article nine is the school assessment. No, the uh, you know, the Moncheus's uh regional vocational technical school district assessment. And the finance committee recommends this one five-zero. Um, it seems a reasonable adjustment given that our student enrollment has increased at Monitec.
I'm sorry, can you, I I guess I don't understand that sentence. Finance committee does what?
Recommended it fi- I didn't either. Five to zero, so five um.
We all, it was unanimous.
Unanimous.
Oh, 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 okay. I'm sorry. I was like, what are we talking?
Took me a second too.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, sounds good. I think, I think the way, you know, we'll go through these here and and, you know, you're gonna be looking for whether the select board uh is in favor of these specifically as well. I think if we um, I I I don't really have that strong an opinion on going through them and then sort of um, doing them all at once about whether we um, recommend or not. But I think, I think if there's something we don't recommend, I think those are the ones we'll talk about. Otherwise, we can go back later and just say we recommend all of these. Okay?
Mm-hmm. Yep. All right, on article ten is the uh Quab and Regional School District Assessment. Uh, that's obviously still in motion. Article eleven is to pay.
So what is, so David, can I stop you? Can I?
I was just gonna probably ask the same question, Chris. So this number, the five-one-six-eight, this is the number you originally proposed in the budget packet?
This is the one that gets you to a balanced budget as it stands right now.
Okay.
It's like a five hundred thousand dollar reduction in the ask from Quab and Regional.
Otherwise known as the one we're gonna pay.
Do you remember, do you remember what uh percent increase that was by any chance?
Right.
Two and a half percent.
This was two and a half over the the prior years?
Yeah.
AKA what we can afford.
Sure, yep.
Without making our sixty percent school budget become a seventy percent school budget.
It's gonna be a long, hard road to hoe. We're off of that, we're off of that for the night, so let's move on.
Yeah. And we've been through the same exact scenario all other years.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Just exhausting.
No, we know how this ends. It's just how ugly it gets between now and then.
See, it's an annual, it's an annual thing. Yeah, we're lucky over COVID.
All right, so article eleven, the finance committee recommended this unanimously. It's the debt for Quab and Regional School District, gotta pay it.
Yeah.
Yep.
I suppose.
Article twelve, um, I'm still working with the cable committee on this one, but this is for their operational budget which will come out of the cable uh franchise fees and it's no impact upon the regular budget. Okay. Article thirteen, this is a sweep article. This is uh, those two things.
The what?
A sweep article. It sweeps things away.
Oh, okay.
Um, we uh raised fifty thousand dollars for the el- uh elevator over Quab at the center school and Senator Goby was good enough to bake that money right into the uh state budget, so the state paid for the elevator. And this article releases back to free cash forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. The other thing that it does is it reduces the borrowing authorization. Voted to borrow thirty thousand dollars for a vehicle for uh DPW. Uh, we only used twenty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-six and seventy-five cents. So we have this seventeen hundred and change cluttering up our books that we have to, that reduces our ability to borrow for other things and we also have to report this to SEC. So this just cleans that up.
Okay.
Article fourteen, this, based upon my conversations with Ryan, this may be more in play than I expected. Um, this is the capital article, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
A free cash.
A free cash and we paid for.
As recommended by the capital improvement committee?
Yeah. And we paid for the the radios out of the uh ARPA fund, so we can take that off. So the forty, uh, four hundred twenty-seven thousand gets reduced to four oh nine five hundred.
So you wanna, so Ryan was recommending we we cut some of this out so that we have more ability to.
Yeah, pay for the school.
You know, pay for the school, so.
I think it's an item under, under report. So he's still working on it.
Yeah, okay. So I think.
We don't, I'll probably get them.
Yeah, I think this is on on the pending list for us.
Well, wasn't this the one that he wanted to swap the roof for the plow truck that got damaged, the years?
Yeah.
Oh, I was wrong.
Yeah, you were.
I didn't see that one coming.
Okay, no worries.
What?
Nothing, private joke clearly.
Uh, we had discussed it in our meeting. Uh, we had discussed it in our meeting about the, uh, the cost of the, um, the damaged DPW truck and whether or not we should reserve ARPA funds in the event that we had to pay additional to, um, replace the, the truck and I thought, you know, we'd get more money from insurance to the tune of like, replace the truck, not like a partial payment.
Well, that was, uh, the truck, it, it would replace that truck, but that truck was like.
Truck.
Yeah, with that truck, that's like thirty years old.
Yeah, that's a replacement works.
There is the problem.
Can find another piece of crap to buy it.
No, 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 that was actually the oldest in the fleet and it was due to be replaced next year or the year after anyway, but not that that shit happens, you know, what are you gonna do, you know?
How did it come to its unfortunate demise?
Uh, it started sliding backwards down the hill and caught the burn and went sideways on that, one of those ice storms, it, you'd be surprised how often those trucks actually go backwards, the guys will tell ya, it's kinda, it's kinda sketchy sometimes. Yeah, it was, it was unfortunately one of, no, luckily he was not, but it was one of the newer drivers, so he, he caught the burn.
So he bounced.
Yeah, and it tipped, it tipped over unfortunately and
Holy crap, alright.
Very crooked, you don't notice it until you get up to it and then you're like, oh hell, yeah.
I think we're lucky, I think this, I think this is a good result.
Yeah, at least we'll.
We got rid of it.
Yeah.
David, can we, can we talk a little bit about this, uh, basketball court at Curtis Rec Field?
It's not supposed to be a court, right, it's basketball hoop or something?
Where's that?
It's the word.
It's the bottom one, eight thousand dollars.
Didn't we just, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we just put a basketball court at Curtis Rec Field? Is there a need to replace it already, or?
No, it's supposed to be that one.
Yeah, there's no room for another court and eight, uh, eight thousand dollars won't do anything, so, yeah, I, I think maybe just if we can get some more clarification on exactly what that means.
Yep.
We're, we're holding this one, I think anyway, pending on this, but based on some of Ryan's recent comments on, on some ideas he has anyway, so I think that's another question to get answered.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Art- article fifteen is five thousand dollars of free cash in order to do the, uh, uh, title search on properties of land of value in order to collect the outstanding ti- uh, taxes and we expect to collect twenty thousand five hundred and pass, uh, due taxes on this property. Uh, and we'll get this property either back on the tax rolls or we can reserve it for municipal purposes. So five will get you twenty. Sixteen, this is for the environmental assessment for the lot fifty-seven, forty-nine thousand six fifty and I'm gonna try to whittle that number down.
Yeah.
Article seventeen, taking whatever is free cash is, uh, available, uh, within the limits set by Ryan and putting it into two buckets, one to go into the general stabilization fund and the other to go into the capital stabilization fund.
Yep.
Article eighteen, this is community preservation administrative costs, six thousand dollars and apportion this money into the four buckets that are allowed for CPA purposes. Article nineteen, thirty-two thousand five twenty, this is.
Real quick, sorry, on eighteen, so do you guys, you know, finance committee, um, do, do, neither for nor against pre- m- presumably, I guess, for me, is because, um, it's sort of their bucket and?
We have no visibility into what they're doing, so we can't.
Well, it's also just the standard requirements by the state law, like there's no, David doesn't say let's do ten, 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 sixty-five, it's the requirement that the state mandates to split it up.
Okay.
Am I wrong, am I correct?
It is, it is required by law.
Yeah, so it's just, it says, okay, you've collected CPA money, congratulations, now divide it.
I think the larger issue is, is that the finance committee is not a part of the CPA committee, which is unusual.
Should be.
Um, not sure what the.
Person on there, no?
Nope.
Oh.
So I think that the finance committee is quite rightly saying that they don't understand the mechanisms and the priorities and the processes. Um, so they're not making recommendations for or against.
Do we know what the, um, state match rate was this year?
I'll have to get that information.
Okay, thanks.
It'll be north of ten percent. Uh, nineteen, this is, uh, debt service for the Rainbow Zen Playground, thirty-two thousand five twenty. Article twenty is debt service for the library roof. Twenty-one is twenty-five thousand for the, um.
Habitat.
The Habitat for Humanity project on Rag- Ragged Hill Road, this is a duplication of, um, what, of requests from the ARPA, so they're not looking for fifty thousand, they're looking for twenty-five thousand. And I think the deal that they articulated was that if this gets passed at town meeting, they'll withdraw their application for twenty-five grand on the ARPA. Twenty-two, this is housekeeping, our dog, uh, our dog fines are out of compliance with the state, um, uh, state law governing this, so we're just changing the, the amount of fines in order to reflect what's, uh, legally mandated by the state. Article twenty.
Three.
Three is, um, the accessory dwelling unit. And article twenty-four is on the, um.
Battery.
Battery storage. And that's it.
Okay. Alright, well, um, what I wrote down were ten, twelve and fourteen, so article ten was, um, correct, so Quabon, uh, uh, assessment, twelve was the, um, the, the Hubbardston Cable Advisory Committee, which, which we're waiting for some additional information on.
Yep.
And, uh, what else did I say, fourteen?
Fourteen, free cash.
Which was the free cash, um, that, that, you know, Ryan had some thoughts on, uh, Chris has a question on, you know, a couple of other things, so other than that, um, I didn't hear, uh, any other, anything else about these other articles, um. So, uh, I guess the question is whether or not we wanna proceed with a recommendation, uh, one at a time we could do, or all of the ones exclusive of ten, twelve and fourteen. Um, you know, I guess that's where we're at.
And we approve.
Why is there, why is there no article for the purchase of the land by the Rec Field?
Uh, because you were, were shooting for the special town meeting for that one.
Okay.
I don't think we have enough information on it anyway, right, this.
Yeah, but somebody could have put it forth, right?
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the, all of the articles in the annual town meeting warrant, with the exception of articles ten, article twelve and article fourteen.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, unanimous on all.
Thank you.
Uh, and for now, if you could just sort of, uh, say the same thing that you said for the finance committee, which is, you know, pending recommendation on the other ones.
Yep, and could I ask for a motion to close the warrant?
I'll make a motion to, uh, that we close the, uh, warrant for FY twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Alright, another important item is next, which is Route sixty-eight, we have, uh, uh, a right of way vote, uh, so Ryan, uh, gosh, I'm ready, David, uh, um, you know, you've been working on this, uh, for many months now and, um, as far as the, the, the right of ways are going, can you just give us a quick little summary of where we're at with those and what you need from us?
Alright, so we've, uh, we've, uh, done the, uh, public meetings, we've done the, uh, um, the, uh, plan, plans for the temporary and permanent easements for the right of way project in the center of the town on Route sixty-eight. Uh, we've sent out the offer, uh, to the, the whole package of information to the, uh, uh, landowners that are affected. So that, uh, package included the letter of offer, the appraisal and the justification of the appraisal. Um, thirty days has expired from that mailing and so you are now in a position where you can take the vote with, on the, uh, order of taking.
Big moment, right here is what this is.
Alright, if we do this, uh, we can stay on track for June fourth advertising that's on date. Uh, if you need to take more time, you can and still stay on track, I'm not recommending that you do that, I think that there's still a lot of moving pieces to this project that, uh, I would like to reserve the twenty-eighth, uh, your next meeting to take care of all of this, but for tonight, if you could, um, I've prepared a motion for you and.
Cut it right here.
Yep.
So, you want me to read it for you?
I think so.
Can we, can we? So if we take the right of way vote, do these landowners get compensated?
Yes, they do.
Based on what?
Based upon the appraisal that, uh, that's mailed out to them.
Okay.
And I also point out that, uh, David pointed out to me before the meeting started, that of all the requests that were sent out, thirty-five didn't even respond out of fifty, so.
Mm-hmm.
Things aren't gonna change, so I think we have to make this, uh, move. Okay, then I'll, uh, read the motion, David.
Yes, please.
Tom Hubbardson, Route sixty-eight Improvement Project. I moved the select board by virtue of and in accordance with the authority of the vote taken under article four of the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one special town meeting, the provisions of chapter seventy-nine and chapter eighty-two, sections twenty-one through twenty-four of the general laws and any and every other power and authority here unto enabling it in any way vote, one, take for all purposes for which public ways are used, including without limitation for the purpose of undertaking the Main Street and Gardener Road, Route sixty-eight Improvement Project. Those easements shown on plans entitled easement planned of land in Hubbardson, Mass. Dated April eighth, two thousand twenty-two, prepared by Hancock Associates, as said plans may be amended. Two, to approve an order of taking to acquire said easements as finally approved by town council and further, three, to authorize the chair of the select board to carry out the purpose of this vote, including the order of taking.
I'll second that.
Um, discussion? Yeah, um, okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous, okay, great. So, you'll let Shirley know that too?
Yep.
Might as well, so Shirley Schiaver, the, um, uh, right of way guru from SDOT, who, who has, um, been part of the process along with our engineers throughout the last couple of years, whatever, with this right of way, year at least, um, you know, she has re- recently received the final right of way plans, uh, which she's reviewing as well, I think there's something in there that says like, as said plans may be amended, there could be some little change that this, this, you know, uh, authorization we just gave isn't gonna affect anything, so, um, but anyway, we notify her and she's been a proponent of pushing forward and she, at any point throughout this process, when they have their monthly meetings or however long they are, um, she could say, you know what, Hubbardson's not ready, push him off till October, push him off till two thousand twenty-four. She's done none of that, she said, yep, we can still make it, we can still make it, so she's been a, a big proponent for us.
Yeah, she's been a good ally.
Yes, big time. Okay, uh, great, so that's Route sixty-eight, take a right of way vote, um, uh, so next item is F, discussion of transition between uh, acting town administrator David Nixon and town administrator Ryan McLean.
So when we put this, uh, this agenda together, we, we thought that Mr., uh, McLean, um, um, would, uh, maybe find other things to do, right, so.
That's what we're calling it now?
Well, his family isn't a medical therapist.
But he's committed to Hubbardson and he's going to be back on May second, is when he takes over the helm.
Yep.
Uh, by the terms of the, the contract by which I work for you, uh, it's automatically, my contract is automatically terminated when he shows up, so he shows up, I go away, um.
Two ships in the night.
Uh, I had this on the agenda in case we needed to talk about an extension and what that may look like. Um, I certainly would never leave town of Hubbardson in the lurch, um, I'm not feeling the need to amend the contract though, cause it seems like Ryan and I are working well enough together that, uh, the, the transition should be pretty smooth.
So, oh, go ahead.
Nope, I'm just saying.
Uh, I was gonna, so, so that means the, you know, our next meeting, which is, uh, April twenty-fifth, will be your last meeting. Um, pending some other sort of thing injected in there, correct? Right, okay, so, you know, you and I discussed during our Friday call, um, and, you know, I sort of feel the same way, which is, um, um, yeah, as much as we appreciate your offer to, you know, stick around and you, I've said, you know, obviously you'll pick up the phone for Ryan or whatever, you, you've, you stated that, that'd be great. But as far as, you know, moving, uh, ahead with, um, sort of who's at the helm in that town administrator, uh, administrative position, it feels like that's it, that's the clean break, right there, Ryan, right? Yep. Okay, well, hugs and kisses next week, next, uh, meeting then, um, then we'll move on to our next item on here, okay?
Where's your hat, what's your hurry?
I don't know, don't hit you all the way.
Nah, I don't mean it like that, he knows that. Um, alright, so next item, old business, uh, we've had this on for a number of, uh, meetings now, um, really know where we're at a hundred percent.
So at ARPA, we did vote to.
Let me just read the item real quick, so this is the, for old business, Laura Foley, keep Hubbardson beautiful budget discussion, go ahead.
So at ARPA, we did vote to, uh, move this project forward to the select board for recommendation, the amount of a thousand dollars. Um, I do believe, you know, some conversations have been had, I think it's possible as well, um, that there might be some funds available for her and another budget for that, that project.
She had money in, uh, according to Sanda, in the, that was raised from years before.
She does, and she alluded to that, and she's gonna exhaust those funds.
So, does she need?
Doing what she needs to do.
Well, yeah, but these are, no offense, this is, I love Laura and I love what she's trying to do, it's been going around forever, but this is a community based thing, not a town funded thing, and I get it's only a thousand dollars, but it turns into a thousand dollars every year for a dumpster you can always get for free, because they budget those things for free, every time I ask for a dumpster, they like, yes, what would you like? Where would you like it dropped off, when? Um, and then t-shirts and bumper stickers and buttons, which in my opinion, absolutely a hundred percent goes against the whole point of Earth Day, of waste not, want not and make, don't make more trash, we're basically making more trash, um, I don't quite understand the concept, but the only thing I can kinda see is the fluorescent shirts to keep yourself visible picking up trash, but again, they hand them out the day of and I would never put on a shirt I just got handed to me without washing it, but then again, I worked in retail too many years and I understand what those shirts have on them and I would never, ever, in a million years, put that on.
You're ruining everything.
Sorry, I am, I'm crapping on everybody's parade there, um, but yeah, it's, it's a community based thing, there's no town anywhere around us that this is money for, these are tax dollars that are provided, it's always community based, uh, fundraised. And I've already had a few people say, what do you mean, we're going to give away t-shirts with my tax dollars? And they were not happy with that at all, and I, yeah, that's kinda, yeah. So, my whole thing is, it's a that, I don't understand why it can't be fundraised, even the t-shirts and everything else, the, the dumpster you can get free all day long. And everything else was only a couple hundred bucks, I don't understand, I just got two new, brand new sponsors for the fair with not even asking, I put one post out and I had two new sponsors pop up and I wasn't even intending on having new sponsors. I was just like, eh, throw it out there, see what happens. It's not hard, it's, this is not rocket science and granted, I do this all the time for a lot of different entities of asking people for money and I usually, it's like literally an email, I don't even go there, it's literally an email. This is not hard and I don't understand why we would be using tax dollars that we don't even have enough of to pay our own freaking bills to give away t-shirts and it's just, it doesn't make any sense.
So, I, I've had this conversation with, with, um, with KB four, I can't tell you, I don't feel strong either way. Like, I, I wish I did, I wish I had more of an opinion, whether or not, I mean, it's, that's an excellent case, but it's like a really nice thing to have, something that's got some. really nice thing to have something that's got some certainty to it, uh, which I think this gives a little bit more certainty to it with ever changing people who lead it, committee members, all that sort of stuff into the future. Um, and you know, for keeping Hubbardson beautiful. So I I I know that's not something to like.
And I think.
So every year I'll come and ask for money for the dingy dash or the Hubbardson Fair for tax money. That would go over like a lead flipping balloon.
I I'm.
It just would.
I think, I think that was Laura's intent, because she's she's aging out of this, right? She's she's walking away from this. And I think her intent was to get this as an official town funded event so that it would continue in perpetuity like Dan said. It's gonna be changing people, changing members, changing chairs. So I think she wanted to just make it more official.
Yeah, but this event has been going on for long before she was Keep Hubbardson Beautiful. I used to pick up trash along sixty eight, growing up as a kid. There's pictures of me in the newspaper doing it because we were near the town line and the Gardener News, it was like shooting fish in a barrel. Ooh, here's some kids picking up trash for Earth Day.
So do you think it's something that is worthwhile to continue?
To continue, yes, but not taxpayer money. It should be, Gardener does the big uh nip hunt.
Can you add it to your list of, can you add it to your list of fundraising events?
In a heartbeat, yes. But if I run everything in town, what happens if I die tomorrow?
Then we have conversations like this and decide if we wanna keep it going.
Yeah, then the town pony up.
Oh, no, if I die tomorrow, there's a whole bunch of stuff that I know would stop in instinct because nobody would do what I do.
No, but that's, but that's her, that's the exit strategy that she's.
But yeah. But that's what I mean. The whole thing is, is like even in Gardener, they do the the nip hunt where uh.
That sounds fun.
Yes, the the liquor store in town.
Just go down my street.
The liquor store in town ponies up five cents for every single nip bottle that is picked up.
Oh, my God.
Yes, it is. It's coming up. It's actually, uh, I think it's like May seventh or something, the Great Nip Hunt of Gardener.
I can't believe they call it that. I can't believe they call it that.
The big, the Great Nip Hunt, Anthony's Liquors.
Yeah.
Ponies up, I think it's five cents per nip bottle.
They just moved, right?
Anthony's, no. Anthony's is still put, that's the one, Gardener Spirits is moving. That's the one in Timpani. Uh, they're building that new location, but anyway, they're all.
That's by the haunted house, right?
Yes, yeah, the the mansion, yes, the Victorian. Um, but they're all. There's a liquor store, yes, Gardener Spirits.
All right, but I digress.
Anyway, sorry.
Yeah, hasn't this, hasn't this gone out lately?
I know, but we have pushed this off a bunch. So I I hear you and I all, but we've pushed this off a bunch and and we just need to decide. For Laura's sake, for all of our sakes, you know, what do we wanna do with the thousand dollars? And I don't mean to because Katie, you already led with it's not that much money. That's not the point. I'm just saying, what do what do we wanna do? Let's decide what to do.
The other point.
Well, haven't we, can I, haven't we put this out to the community and we've got volunteers or or what are they gonna be, members, official members?
They're members. They're signed in, they're sworn in, they have meetings.
Yeah, owners. Yeah, there is, okay.
That was the meeting ago, so.
Yes. They can easily ask people for money. It's not hard.
So are you saying we do away with that committee?
No, you leave that committee alone, let them fundraise it, just like the same way I fundraise for special events. The same way the veterans just raised a shit ton of cash for that memorial. This, you know, it's.
Well, I think, you know, you're talking apples and oranges when you're talking about a big memorial to go up in town.
True, but they're only asking for a thousand dollars, but they're only looking for a grant. They can easily raise a grant.
I'd, 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 I.
I thought, really? A whole year you can't raise a thousand dollars?
I don't know, I don't know that they can't. I just don't know that it was in there of purview or if it was. You know, Laura, I don't know what Laura's intent was. She's transitioning out. She had some leftover funds like you alluded to that maybe she thought she could do the project for.
Laura does not, she said she didn't like fundraising. That's what she said when she was standing here and she even said, I don't know how I do it all the time and more power to me. She said she absolutely hates asking people for money and I understand, not everybody likes asking people for money, not everybody is as ballsy as I am and just like, hey, give me some cash, this is what I'll do for you, you know, and I get that. But that's what the whole point of building the committee was to make it go long and to allow that to happen and then they have a whole year to do it.
So what is the process to trans this to a committee that you wanna be on?
I don't wanna be on. They have their own committee. They already have a committee.
Well, I thought you just said you would volunteer to do it.
No, I volunteered not to do it because I don't believe the same way that I love Laura and I love the way she thinks, but I don't agree with it and that's why I haven't been on the committee. I went the first year and helped her with the fundraising efforts and stuff like that, but I do the Boy Scouts, I do the Girl Scouts. If I were to do it, I would not do it the same way. Laura can do it and the committee can do it their way. I never wanna crap on somebody that's doing something because you're doing something. I'll give you all the power in the world, but I don't wanna pay for it out of tax money.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this along now, so, no, 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 I mean, we're we're at a point, so if 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 somebody would like to make a motion on this item, um, whatever that might be, you know, this is the time to do that.
I'd make a motion that we approve the expenditure of a thousand dollars of ARPA funds for the Keep Hubbardson Beautiful Committee Budget.
Um, question?
Do you mind second that and then question?
I will second that.
Seconded?
But.
Discussion?
Yeah, I still got discussion.
I've got something to say.
This is the same time.
Are we talking about?
It's been fun.
And I.
Are we talking about?
Yeah, go to the discussion.
Are we talking about um a one-time ARPA funding this for this year? Or are we talking about keeping this as a committee that gets town funded for twenty twenty three and beyond?
My motion is just for ARPA funding for this year because we only have ARPA funding for one year and the only question we have right now is, do we approve, do we uh approve the recommendation of the ARPA committee to fund this project in the amount of one thousand dollars?
And I I have a reservation on that that I would like to mention, uh, and again, I'm a fan of Laura, but also and a thousand dollars regardless of the figure, I'm concerned now uh that something like this, which is relatively a a new thing that was proposed, is getting the recognition from your group where I'm still waiting to hear about our town businesses that haven't been helped yet. Yet everybody always seems to come up with something else and then next thing you know, you're giving them money. What I don't wanna happen, and if it does, I will be very upset, but I mean, in terms of that, is all of a sudden, everybody else has gotten these new things and there's nothing left of the town businesses who only have this one chance to get a little help from COVID and I don't uh.
Is this new or was this part of the?
This was the original, this was an original submit.
This was part of the original package.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But original in the sense that, yes, but in the same sense, the town businesses that put in a long time ago.
No, I think it was.
Their requests.
Well, prior to our RFP, I think it's huge.
But there's also more asks than what the ARPA money we have currently. So by giving this money away, ARPA was originally, uh, the original intent was to give um the employees an extra boost for working through COVID, to help businesses with lost revenue and to fix town infrastructure, long-term problems that you're never gonna see a hole out of. The first round was mostly, it was.
Big ticket item.
Well, it was the hole and also to the the employees. There are still businesses that are waiting, that haven't come up and there are more big ticket items and there's more big ticket items that haven't even made it because nobody put in an application yet. And it's, the money's already, what is there has already been asked for and I granted, I get this is only a thousand dollars, but that's a thousand less we can use for something. You only got one shot at one point four million dollars. That's it right now. We have no guarantees. There may be more in the pipeline, maybe. That's a maybe. And even if there is, I guarantee there's more big ticket items that we'll never be able to, you know, do unless we use these funds.
But in the same sense, I, we're we've always been big here in trying to get businesses to come into town. We've always been wanting, saying we need revenue, et cetera. And I don't think that we should be putting aside the businesses that we have in a struggle.
Well, we're not, we're not putting any businesses aside, okay?
Well, nothing so far is going to them.
We've got a total of, well, that's because the process is working. We have some proposals tonight that you guys can vote on, on that subject matter forthcoming. But, you know, we've gotten the first wave of applications back. We've gotten three applications from businesses and one application from a nonprofit. And we're prepared to vote on two of those tonight, right? Two or three of those tonight.
Well, I think David didn't ma- they didn't land on the agenda, so we should wait till the next time, but they're not as, they're not as pressing. The items that you're asking about, Jeff, so we have the three businesses, Here For You, Hub Town Diner and Go Green Manufacturing. Go Green Manufacturing, we approved to pass on to the select board at the last meeting, so you'll see that next time. Hub Town Diner has some more finances to grab for us that we asked for. We're meeting tomorrow night. We should have those. Here For You, we've invited three times and they haven't been here. So hopefully tomorrow, Here For You will be here so we can talk to the business owner and figure out what they're looking for and their pieces. So we haven't, we haven't left them off. We actually didn't vote on the large items like the fire truck and so forth because we wanted to make sure we had room to take care of the businesses that took the time to put their applications in first. So totally hear you, we're working on that piece.
I appreciate that.
But I think going back before Dan and I both fall asleep here, because it's past my bedtime. Um, I think tonight we're just deciding whether or not we wanna use one thousand dollars of that. Now, we have a motion and we have a second, doesn't mean, you know, the board needs to agree to any of that, but it's on the table to make, we can even wait till next time if you want. I don't know if they need, do we know if they need the money for their event on Saturday?
They've already paid for their event on Saturday, so this would.
The dumpster was free. I have no idea.
I don't really even know what it's for. This would actually probably be next year's money at this point. It would just be coming out of ARPA, so, um. But we have a motion and a second on the table, so I'm gonna move to a vote. So, um, all in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Abstain. So motion doesn't carry um for the thousand dollars. One yes vote, three no votes and one abstention. Okay, the next item is um an ARPA update slash discussion. I think we just got it, some of it. Um, Heather did just indicate that we don't actually have any specific, um, uh, uh, what do you call them?
Recommendations.
Recommendations, yep, thank you. Um, but we do have a um, uh, uh, from what David sent us earlier, there's been some changing in the language that we need to uh do some couch keeping on, is that right?
Right, right, so.
So you just need this motion, in other words, correct?
Yes, please, yeah.
Okay, I move the top, I'm sorry.
So go, go, I'm agreeing with you, Jeff, go.
Can I, can we talk about what is, can I get a translation of this motion so I understand what it means?
Yeah, so originally when the interim uh final rule came out, uh, there was a formula that was provided so that we could calculate with the, but the uh, of the one point four million dollars, how much of that could we count towards uh lost revenue? And the formula came out with a figure of about five hundred thousand dollars out of the four, one point four million. Then the final rule came out from the US Treasury and says you can do that or you can do the ten million dollars would be all uh considered to be the uh lost revenue, which gives you the maximum flexibility to deploy your ARPA dollars as you, as you see good for the town. Um, so because it mentions two ways of calculating and because it's likely that we're gonna get uh audited in five years' time, I'm asking for a formal motion that we identify the what's called the standard allowance, which is the first ten million dollars to be considered to be lost revenue and that gives you the maximum flexibility.
Perfect, all right, okay, Chris?
Good, good.
I move the town of Hubbardson adopt the standard allowance for determining the amount of lost revenue available to Hubbardson as provided by the US Treasury's final rule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes? Um, got anything you wanna tell us in the T TA report we haven't already beat up?
Uh, we've done most of, I've written there, there's two things. Um, Lombard Road is out to bid, the bids are due at one o'clock tomorrow.
Yay.
And um.
Oh.
Uh, not tomorrow, the next day, Wednesday.
Just one thing on the Lombard Road. Um, I did hear from a resident when the initial posting, I'm guessing it was Travis who did it on Facebook. It was a little bit misleading of language when they got the approval from ARPA. It sounded like, you know, they were closing the road already to start the pavement, which made it sound like they already had the money. So if we could just make sure in the future, he's a little more um conscientious of the language, because it, I think it upsets people when they're like, wait a minute, you just got approved, you didn't go out to bid, how are you already closing the road for that? I think what he meant was we're closing it to do the covert work.
He did mean that, yeah.
And we got approved and we're excited, we'll be moving forward in the bidding process, but that wasn't clear in the post.
Okay, we we should do that, but we, I think that the operative word there was also excitement because he was excited, I, you know, which is great when he can fix roads, so.
Yeah, every day he has a new post with a new closing at house number, whatever, to do whatever covert.
Understood, okay. Uh, okay, David, any?
Okay, the other is the cell tower, uh, two updates there. You and I were looking for MEPA filings tonight, so I went to Western and Sampson, the engineers on this project and there's no MEPA filing. There's an MHC, Mass Historic Commission approval, which they got the clearance for. Uh, the F A, FAA and the US Federal Fish and Wildlife uh permits are in process. And uh, so they just need to submit, when those are available, they need to submit those to the Federal Communications Commission for final approval and the project can proceed.
Okay.
In the meantime, AT&T has filed an application to build a cell tower at fourteen Main Street. And so that application is with the the Inspection Department right now.
That's a whole separate tower, just in case.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So wait a minute, if that were to be built, does that mean we get the revenues?
No.
Oh.
Right.
So it may be a missed opportunity.
Why don't you buy fourteen Main Street?
Oh, man. Figured I'd try, right?
All right, okay.
We've covered everything else.
All right, um, thank you and um uh, the next item is policies to review, which which we don't have any. Uh, then there is matters not reasonably anticipated by Chair. I don't have any. Does anyone else?
Nope.
Yeah, I got a few.
What you got?
Um, I wanna talk about the dump truck. We alluded to it earlier that we're not getting nearly enough funds to replace that with a new vehicle. Do we know where we're going with that?
Yeah, so that's part of Ryan's conversation and thinking about uh the capital article and the annual town meeting warrant. He's thinking of uh pulling out a hundred thousand dollars from the uh, from the the DPW roof. And that may make sense because Senator Goby has expressed a lot of interest in providing that money through the state budget, so I'll be meeting with Senator Goby's representative on Wednesday to see if we could do that, but it would basically mean that we would have to put in, on hold some of the capitalized articles in order to generate enough free cash to pay for a vehicle.
Will there be an ARPA application forthcoming for a new truck?
No, I don't think you've got the money for that.
How much is it?
It was like a three hundred thousand or something like that.
Okay.
Is that newer used?
That would be new.
Okay, are we only considering new?
Um, I'll get back in touch with you on that one.
Okay.
Let me talk.
Yeah, I thought Travis was looking at the used Oshkosh. I thought that's what the email said. Am I wrong?
I can't recall.
I can recall.
So I'll have to go.
A used Oshkosh.
That's what I thought I saw something.
Yeah. And that's why the idea was to take out the roof and swap it with that and then put the roof further back in hopes on the capital improvement plan, in hopes that maybe Ann Goby will fix it and then the roof goes away altogether.
But that's, there's no ARPA in that.
No, there's no ARPA in that, zero ARPA in that.
Yeah, this is, this is just removing it from.
Yeah.
Spending capital, um, free cash on capital and doing something else with it.
Right.
Yeah.
So. And if she comes through, it might be off our books entirely.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Um, the electronic sign. So the, that's been approved for ARPA. Hubbardson Lions has volunteered to partner on that project and helped to free the cost by doing a lot of the labor, a lot of the physical work to keep that relatively less expensive than it is.
But then you throw away all the savings by having the included data, the warranties and guarantees and the IT service that goes along with it. You lose all of that by doing the work yourself. So you're not saving any money.
You're saving a lot of money.
No, you're not, ten to twenty year project.
Well, why can't we find a display that we just buy and own and get a different service con- Why can't we find a display that we just buy and own and get a different service con- contract for the display only?
It, you, you're, you, then you don't have the IT service, you don't have the data service, we have to pay for all those, you don't.
What you, what?
You don't have the warranties and guarantees of fixing.
Why can't we buy all that, just for the, just for the, just for the electronic portion of it?
Once you buy it, there's no warranties or guarantees, so. Unless you're buying it from a company that's gonna service it.
Right.
Yeah.
And all, and all they do is they put, they put the screen, they put the screen on a pedestal that's built and. Labor and everything by the Lions Club and saves a lot of that forty-three thousand dollars.
Cause the company that.
Maybe we can fund.
I got to do it, has all of those warranties and guarantees and data service and all of that included. For the lifetime, well, not all of the lifetime, the data service is the lifetime, depending on how long it lasts. It's guaranteed for a minimum of five years, after five years, we only pay for parts, they can still fix it for the cost, so anything breaks. They fix it and then on top of it, um, any IT issues we have, cause you know, it's electronic. So show me an IT issue that you're not gonna have, they will help us work through it. That's a cost savings right there.
I hear what you're saying, but why can't you get all that just for the electronic portion of the sign?
Cause you can't unless you pay somebody to install it. And the only company that includes, includes the data service for life is that one specific company, that's why all the municipalities around here use them. Holden has used them.
If you can be presented with a company that will provide the electronics and the warranties for the electronics.
And the data, nobody, nobody does the data. I'm, we're already moving forward.
You can be, if you can be provided with a company that will do that for you.
There is no company.
Entertain the thought of letting the Lions Club help to fray the cost of forty-three thousand dollars.
We're past, we're past that, I'm already working with the business, they already, they already got the display and everything. They're working on the renderings and all that stuff, we're past that.
We're not past that, we can, we can put a stop on that anytime you want.
You, you won't, you're not getting the same, that ship has sailed with trying to get all this other. I've already worked out the, the people that have, that I've worked, found, this is why.
Did you sign a contract with them?
This is why they do all the municipalities.
Well.
This is back and forth via email.
Obviously, they do the municipalities, for whatever reason, that's their business, but.
Because they have the best game in town, they have all the, the data, the data service alone. For like ten years, twenty years, some of their signs are lasting up to, he has signs that are still working fine and they've been over fifteen years old.
Okay, so who's to say that there isn't another company out there that does the same thing?
Cause I just said that, they're the only ones that do that.
I can't believe that.
Okay, well, I'm working with this company, I don't understand why we would do this and I was told no by the Lions how many times over. You told me no after the meeting, after the sign-by law was passed, you're like, oh, I don't think that's gonna happen, Ed Blanchard told me flat out no in the parking lot. After the sign-by law was passed, if the Lions would be willing to reentertain this. Now I go through and get an actual plan together with a company that will warranty and guarantee their work and the long-term savings, cause. That's the biggest problem in this town, we don't fix anything and there's no maintenance, because we don't have plans to do that. And I come up with a company that will deal with it all and it's a package deal and we're good to go and we secure the funds. And I'm working with the company to do it and now you wanna try to pull the rug out, Chris, are you kidding me?
I'm trying to find a more economical, economical way to get the same project done.
But you're not gonna get the same project.
Other projects with the ARPA money, like you just.
When you buy things off the internet to put things in, you don't get the same warranty.
Saying, but have you investigated other opportunities to do things?
There's other sign companies, yes.
And the.
They don't have data service, they don't have this.
Any less expensive than this?
It's apples and oranges, depending on what you wanna get, I went with the package that makes the most sense for the town in the long run, because again. We don't maintain anything, look at this building, it's fallen down around our ears, look at the school, every time we turn around, we have to fix stuff, cause we don't maintain it. The library, we have to fix the foundation and this and that and everything else, cause again, it's not maintained, we just had pipes leaking in the bathroom next door, which flooded.
I hear about maintenance.
Yeah, and this is IT, this is the worst kind of maintenance.
Entertain a conversation with the Lions Club where they provide labor to build you a statuette.
No, cause this company won't deal with it, this company won't do that, they are packaged.
Opportunity to partner with the Lions to pursue a different company that may supply just the monitor. And put it on your pedestal and just the package and just the.
I don't have a pedestal, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's what I'm saying, the Lions would be willing to build you a pedestal.
Out of what, this is also stuff that is like made out of aluminum and everything else, it's not gonna rot, it's not wood, it doesn't need to be painted, there's no maintenance. That's the whole thing, there's no maintenance, if something goes horribly awry, I call these people and they come out and deal with it.
I hear you.
With what you're asking, there's maintenance, there's all kinds of problems electronically and everything else.
I think you're gonna run into problems with whatever kind of sign you put up and it will require maintenance.
Yes, that's why I call these people.
There's an offer on the table. From a charitable organization in town to provide you free labor to build something. To put a sign.
How about, then, how about, how about we cut out the electrical and the Lions put in the electrical for the sign and then we don't have to pay for any electrical costs? I have this, the schematics for the electrical.
I'm not negotiating, I'm not negotiating, yes, I'm just asking you if you're willing to partner with the charitable organization.
I would love the Lions to put in the electrical.
To help defray the cost. Of the construction.
I'm not interested, no, cause I think this is a better deal for the town in the long run.
Well, so I'm gonna just jump in real quick, so, um. Uh, just trying to, to see if there's a, a, a way forward and, and this is, um, this sign has been approved. Um, and you would be, uh, obtaining it in whatever means through, uh. The, uh, what, what sort of entity do you believe you're working for that, it's not the select board necessarily, so is it Hubbardson Celebration or is it just something?
It's special events, but also with, um, Sander would have access to it, the town administrator and the town.
What I'm saying is, it's, it's outside the select board at this point, so, and, and Chris is, is clearly coming sort of from the li- lion standpoint. So in my view, this isn't really something we need to decide or even sort of chime in on, with, the, the select board's already. Given our opinion on this sign, so if there's future discussions, I think that's between you guys and not us.
Okay.
Alright, let's discuss this outside this arena.
Okay.
Where we don't have to drag you all through.
I mean, if, if we're, if we're bound to be dragged, we are, I just don't think we are.
I'm looking for an opportunity to save the town money, that I believe is on the table, so.
Alright, what else you got, something else?
Um. No, that's all I got.
Got one quick question before we adjourn, uh, cause. The school department is having a meeting, this comes Wednesday night, that we all were at, the original one and they have to. It's a public hearing, but they had to do it again because someone complained that it wasn't posted correctly. And they were just saying, well, a lot of us got here, they needed to know if there's gonna be a quorum. Either on Zoom or in person at Wednesday night's meeting. Because again, all the, all the select boards are asked to be there. And as I said, either through Zoom.
Posted.
It is posted, so I, I, I was there last time in the Zoom, three of us were.
I'll be there in person.
Two, three, us three, last night, yeah, 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 so, I, I, I'm gonna go, this, I'm gonna zoom in Wednesday.
You're gonna be there by Zoom, okay, cause I thought I was gonna, I'm gonna try to go, go.
Go, go, okay.
Yeah, I'm going in person.
Okay, anybody else, are you guys?
Some, maybe.
I don't know.
Sounds good, alright.
So.
Got it.
But we would have a.
Yep.
Yeah, there'd be a forum, but yeah, it's posted.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Um, in discussion, I'm gonna ask, is there any public or press questions? Seeing none, is there any further discussion?
No.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, adjourned at seven, uh, nine.